Good evening, Chair Bukowski and agency members. This is a study session on the Reduced Main Street Alternative. By the way of background, TMG Partners in August 2005 submitted an application for marketplace redevelopment and that was a proposal to construct four new buildings, which would accommodate about 340 condos and about 61,000 square feet of retail space. As a part of the permit processing and CEQA review, the draft EIR was published in June of last year, and the draft EIR contains the analysis of the project as well as analysis of four alternatives as required by CEQA. The final EIR was published in November and that included the responses to comments on the draft EIR. In response to the comments made on the draft EIR, the final EIR contains an additional alternative, and that is the Reduced Main Street Alternative. This is a modified and a smaller version of the Main Street Alternative that was analyzed in the draft EIR. As a result of this environmental process, staff recommends and the applicant concurs that the Reduced Main Street Alternative is the superior project for the site. The goal of the study session is to introduce this Reduced Main Street Alternative to the agency members and so is its comments on it. This is a summary of the difference between the original project and the Reduced Main Street Alternative. The Reduced Main Street Alternative is a bigger but a long-term phased project which would result in the redevelopment of the existing surface parking lots with structured parking, mixed-use development, and two new streets, and an enlarged city park. The main difference is, you can see the last column here, we have additional residential units, more about 100,000 square feet additional retail commercial space. They are introducing about 100,000 square feet of office space. And the UA theaters as a part of Reduced Main Street Alternative is assumed to be removed from the project, which is not the case in the original project.
Can I ask a point of order?
Okay.
Mayor, on the City Council agenda, this project is also on that agenda for the EIR certification. Are we going to hear that at the same now or are we going to wait?
When we convene the redevelopment meeting, I will move that item up so that they're heard almost concurrently.
Right.
Go ahead, Maru.
Sure. Like I mentioned, this is a phased development project, so the phase one of the project would be, just to get you oriented here, this is Shellmount Street. These are the railroad tracks. This is Christie Avenue here and 64th Street. So in the phase one, the development would take place on two main sites, this portion and this portion. This is Shellmount Building One, and it would include retail space along Shellmount Street, 10 townhouses, and four-level parking. The height of this building would be about 50 feet. The second building, or Shellmount Two Building, is a high-rise. It will contain about 196 residential units, over three levels of parking, as well as ground-level retail right here. The third building would be the 64th Christie Building, which is located on Christie Fourth and 64th Street. It will replace the existing warehouse that's there right now with a mixed-use project, 8,000 square feet of ground-level commercial space parking, and then 185 units over eight levels. The height of this building would be 85 feet. In addition to these three buildings, we'd also have small retail paths right here at the corner of Shellmount Avenue and Shellmount Street, and a small pad next to Borders. Both of them would total about 4,500 square feet of retail space. In Phase Two A, under the first option, this involves realignment of the Shellmount Street, and it moves it west away from the railroad tracks, thereby creating space for development along the tracks. What would develop here is a office space. You'd have 120,000 square feet of office space. It would be five levels, over five levels of parking. There would be ground-level commercial along Shellmount Street. In Option Two, the realignment of Shellmount Street would not take place. Instead, if depending on the market conditions, the UA structure would be removed and redeveloped with the following: about 100,000 square feet of retail space, which would be two-level. There would be a high-rise here, it would be 150, it would contain 130 units, and there'll be commercial space at ground level again, about 14,000 square feet, along with parking and 68 townhouses. The Phase Two B would, depending on whichever construction takes place, whether the UA theater comes first or the realignment of Shellmount Street comes first, would see both the Shellmount Street realigned, the UA theater replaced with new structures, as well as, excuse me, creation or development of 63rd Street, which is right here, which would connect Shellmount Street to Christie Avenue, as well as a small plaza at this area. In the Phase Three would see redevelopment of this area of the marketplace site, which is, like I mentioned, a surface parking lot. This would be again a mixed-use project, 86 residential units with three levels of parking with ground-level retail space. The height of this building would be 85 feet. There would also be a small retail pad at what is right now the existing Christie Park. The Christie Park itself would relocate northwards and enlarge, so this whole thing would be a park. In addition, 62nd Street would be created, created between Shellmount Street and the park. The way between this area and the park would only be a pedestrian way, so this street would not go through all the way to Christie Avenue. There are a number of other pedestrian improvements, pedestrian transit and bicycle improvements, which I'm going to let the applicant go through, since they have an extensive presentation themselves. In terms of timing of phases, the total proposed phasing horizon is anticipated to be 25 years. The phasing horizon is dependent on the current tenant leases, their consent regarding parking arrangements during construction, as well as future tenant departure. The construction of Phase One is expected to begin in 2009, 2010, and the Phase Two and the Phase Three would proceed after that between 2010 and 2024. In terms of financial considerations, the implementation of this plan would involve costs that may not be supported from project revenues alone. These include costs of converting existing surface parking to structured parking, cost of establishing new streets and relocating Shellmount Street, also creating a new enlarged Christie Park, and of course, the talks of cleanup. TMG may make a financial assistance proposal to the agency that might involve replacing the existing parking lot into public parking structures. The agency assistance could be financed from new tax increments revenues from new buildings and tied to the phasing plan. In terms of next steps, should the agency conclude that the revised plans and phasing meets the objectives of the agency for the improvement of the marketplace, the following steps would be appropriate. One is the council certification of the EIR, which is on the council's agenda tonight. Just to let you know, the Planning Commission recommended certification of the EIR at their December 13th meeting.
What was that vote, please, of the Planning Commission?
The planning, it was unanimous with Commissioner Donaldson recusing due to conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you.
The next step after the council certification of the EIR would be the Planning Commission consideration of the project plans, and then would be the agency negotiation of an owner participation agreement for any agency financial assistance that may be needed and appropriate. Staff request that the agency provide us comment and direction regarding the overall size and uses of the new building additions, the phasing plan, as well as support for the agency assistance to offset any extraordinary development costs that this would involve. With this, that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer it. The applicant does have an extensive presentation with more detailed plans, so.
Okay. Are there any initial questions, Maru, before we continue with the presentation?
Let's continue.
Okay. Applicant, come on forward and tell us what you've got to show.
Hi, my name is Denise Pinkston. I'm a partner at TMG Partners, and we are very pleased to be in front of the City Council tonight to discuss land use plan for the Emeryville Marketplace site. We developed the marketplace almost 20 years ago. In the early years of our company, we've now been in the Bay Area for 25 years. Just to let you know a little bit about what else TMG has done in that period of time, we are, as of 2007, the largest commercial real estate development company in the San Francisco Bay Area. We do not specialize in any single product type. We build housing, office, and retail. We've done landmark projects in communities throughout the Bay Area, including in these slides, the Land Market, One Market, which is directly across from the Ferry Building in San Francisco and now home to Microsoft and Del Monte in San Francisco. The slide below it is a very large, high-tech complex we developed in the Peninsula with over a million square feet of lab and office space. Next to that is the Albany Target, is a Berkeley residence, a place I spend a lot of time at these days. But that's something TMG developed with Target Stores in the City of Albany a few years ago. And under construction and currently for sale is the 1160 Mission Project, which is a high-rise, for-sale, high-end residential complex, and still doing quite well in spite of the recent market downturn. So, we're not only active in the Bay Area, but we're proud to be a part of the Emeryville community and to say that we began our work, really, in the Bay Area in places like Emeryville. Our early projects in Emeryville included a lot of what you see on this slide. Not only the Emeryville Marketplace project, but the Bay Center offices, the Emery Bay Club and Apartments, Powell Street Plaza. What doesn't appear on the slide is the Emeryville Loft Project, and a lot of those buildings we built almost 20 years ago, we held them in our portfolio for a long period of time. And we've now, as developers, refocused our attention on the Emeryville Marketplace, which has, in my personal opinion as a planner, been crying out for a new approach. It is an old 80s-style mixed-use development, economically very successful, but as a land use plan, somewhat disappointing. It's this large sea of surface parking with buildings that are separated at different ends of the development site by parking and cars, and really doesn't reflect the best thinking of the current century in land use planning, mixed-use urban infill development, transit-oriented development. So when I started working on the project in 2003, we began thinking about how to convert this site, which does quite well today, but really could be something better, away from its current auto-dominated land form, and into a neighborhood that we can all be proud of. And I'm happy to say that we received this week comments from the U.S. Green Building Council on our application to make this neighborhood one of the first U.S. Green Building Council certified neighborhoods in the United States. And the U.S. Green Building Council believes we're eligible for a platinum-level certification for the Emeryville Marketplace redevelopment. So we're incredibly pleased to be making this presentation to you tonight and to be moving along with all of these components. We started talking with the community about four years ago about the marketplace site, and we submitted about three years ago to do a preliminary development plan and a full-scope EIR. We're one of the first full-scope EIRs that's been done in Emeryville in recent years. Lots of projects have been approved in a variety of ways. Many of the biggest projects have had full-scope EIRs like Marketplace. And so we've been working on it for about three years. One thing we did that's a little unusual, I think it's caused some confusion, we'll talk about it later when we talk about the EIR, is that not only did we propose a project and do an EIR on the project, but we knew that with a 15-acre site and a lot of interested community folks, there'd be a lot of debate about what the right site plan would be. So we've asked the city to look at a variety of land use alternatives to give the city the opportunity to engage in a pretty active dialogue about what the right ultimate site plan is for the site, and then have the EIR support whatever decision the city makes. So when we get to that discussion later, you'll see a full-scope EIR with a lot of alternatives and a lot of options and mitigation measures, and that's so that you and we can have discussions beginning tonight and going for the next few months to figure out what the best project is for the city to approve at the marketplace site. As Maru pointed out, and I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, we've asked the city to give us a development plan for this entire 15-acre site in four phases, and have the development plan set maximums, maximums for height, building massing, where we can put buildings, overall traffic and circulation impacts, and total amount of square footage. That development plan will be followed by final development plans for each site and phase. Unlike, say, a Chiron or a Pixar, we don't just do one thing. We're a private commercial developer, we build a variety of product types, and each individual site might want to be something over time that it wouldn't work well as today. So with a 25-year phased plan, we're asking the city to give us flexibility over time to determine exactly what each building will look like, what the mix of building and parking and land use will be in the building, provided that it's consistent with the initially approved development plan and the initial environmental review. And then with each final development plan, the details about what's the building material, how is it clad, what does it look like, what's the public improvement package that goes with that building, and so forth, would be detailed in the final development plans for each site and each phase. And then again, as staff mentioned, we are proposing to the city for consideration, not tonight, but at a future date, that in addition to asking you to approve the development plan, that you consider allowing the tax increment generated just by my Phase One project to be dedicated to the construction of a city-owned parking facility that would be located on the site plan location, we'll go over later, and that your financial assistance to construct that parking garage will be used to help get this project going. This project is incredibly, incredibly complicated. It's not like buying raw land and proposing buildings on it. There are tenant consents that encumber the site. The site has contaminants like many sites in Emeryville do, but in order to get any project done, I have to go and get willing consent from the Woodfin Hotel, Borders Books, Regal Theaters. The site is encumbered by leases. I can't just go build a building when I feel like it. I need to roll my building plan into my tenant leases. As we get into the OPA proposal, which staff will get this week, we look forward to discussing with you whether that's a good idea or not, but really what I'd like to focus on tonight is the site plan, so you can understand what the whole program is and see if that's something you're interested in. What I'd like to do now is turn over the presentation to my designers. They are thrilled to be part of a design team to do one of the first lead green-certified neighborhoods in the country, and they're here tonight to show you their terrific ideas for how to really redevelop Marketplace into something we can all be proud of starting today and going forward. The first speaker will be David Gates, who's our landscape architect and also for TMG, does a lot of master planning work.
Thanks, Denise. Good evening.
Raise that microphone up a little bit. Great, thank you very much.
You have to hear me if I do that.
Well, the TV audience needs to hear me.
Little more?
Thank you.
Okay. What I want to do is just give you a snapshot, you know, briefly of what we think this neighborhood can be. And fun for me, because we worked with Denise way back when, and I've seen the evolution from old warehouses with a lot of surface parking to some underground parking and surface parking. And this particular scheme will really weight toward the pedestrian. You know, there will be surface parking only at key areas for bus drop-offs, and the emphasis is on the pedestrian and the bike and sort of a vital sinew. And what I'll talk about tonight is the landscape fabric that really connects and brings the pieces together. And as was explained by Denise, right now it's kind of a quilt of parking areas, nice retail destinations, places to live, places to work, and lots more asphalt. So our goal here is to kind of complete the neighborhood, define what a neighborhood should be. And looking at this plan, and I'll use the cursor here, basically, we're looking at the historic grid and trying to keep basically 63rd doing what it does, adding a new 62nd, and building an open space system of quiet recreation, passive, some degree of active, and really vital lively streets that sort of take that grid, share the pedestrian with the car, and give you those places to work, places to shop, places to eat. And what I'll do is walk you through these five sectors and give you some images that, as Denise said, you'll see this back in more detail, but I think it'll give the spirit of what the place can be. And right now, the key in a way is how these spaces link, and Area Five really is taking your existing park, redoing it, increasing it by about 30%, and then giving it a proprietorship, putting some retail, a little jewel down there, so it'll have activity around it. So there's a little key map in the upper left. So this is what we're calling the main plaza. As Shellmount bends, it's highly visible. It's going to take and surround the outdoor use space with retail activities, and it becomes a focal point for those shoppers who are moving north and then bend and come down a spine, basically. There'll be a cross-axial spine right here at 62nd that will take you down to the Village Green. This will have water elements in it, places for outdoor seating, eating, all sorts of a range of things. And the traffic will move through, but in a way that is weighted for the pedestrian and the bicycle. And the images around it give you some sense of the kinds of uses, pockets of eating, raised planters for basically what we're calling rain gardens. Your soils here are difficult, you got a high water table, you got a saline intrusion. So for us to be able to raise the grade a little bit, berm it, get better plant growth, and use that for what's called rain garden filtrations. So the next, then, moving on, seeing in the upper left again, kind of moving down the Main Street. The streetscape itself is the lifeblood of these neighborhoods, being able to walk through them, enjoy them, have activities, look into storefronts. And so the lower graphic shows you the existing marketplace with Borders Books, and Jeff Heller will talk to you more about the architecture and how it meets the ground, but it's these edges that really make this a neighborhood. And the way that the scale of the buildings and the sizes of the streets and the proportion of open space sidewalk to the scale of the street and the size of the buildings is unique and a great opportunity here. And then, of course, we've got the train station. We need to earmark that as a special place. There's a plaza there. There'll be wayfinding elements that sort of help you get from one place in the Bay Area to another. The stairs will be a piece of sculpture pulling you up there in an inviting way. They'll be accessible for bicycles and ADA. It's a nice bend in the corner, so it becomes a very special place and almost a portal to other parts of the Bay Area. The Gateway Plaza, there's a green there now. We'll reconfigure that. We'll put a small jewel box building in there to give it some life and vitality and bring some opportunities for shopping and eating there. It's an opportunity for sculpture. Again, it's one of those flat iron sites that's highly visible as you're moving north, so there'll be a lot of visual interest as you pull people from Madison Marquette up into this area. So it's a key spot for us. And then probably the crown jewel will be what we're calling the Village Green. And we have the pedestrian spine that's bringing you down on a new 62nd Street on the grid, takes you all the way through what is an existing park now that gets redone to the existing green space on the other side. It has a recreational component, you know, for kids, frisbees, dogs, and other things. It has seating nodes around it, built-in seat walls, opportunity for sculpture. It has the retail component, which will spill out places to eat and sit, and we're calling this kind of the town square. This is where the bicycle race starts in town, loops around town, and ends up coming back here. There's an outdoor water element for that. And we're trying to take the streets and shape them in a way that the landscaping jumps to both sides of it, so that the residential here will feel like it's on the park, and we're doing the same with other sides, and we're taking the existing sports bar and connecting it to that spine. So it really becomes an organizing visual center. These are just a couple of graphics showing, again, the components that we think makes this neighborhood work. So you're looking to the north up Shellmount, you know, you've got the rail stairs here. You've got the existing sidewalk that's part of Marketplace now. We're going to double-load that, so we get activity and energy and vitality on both sides. And then the Gateway Plaza is here. And I think important for us, and I know Jeff will talk more about this, we want this to be sustainable. Regional Water Quality Board, environmental issues, water usage, we know your city's at the forefront of that already. One of the first good guidelines came out of your community. It works especially well for us here because of the soils. So you'll see a new landscape look. You'll see a lot of built-up, what we call rain gardens, so we'll bring the landscape up. We'll bring in soils that act as filters. We'll take the water from the roofs, the roof decks, we'll run them through those filters. Those filters will be seat walls. So you'll see a look here that we think is an upscale urban look, and you'll see a vegetation palette that's rather different. We'll take it from the edge of the buildings, we'll take it up the face of the building, and because we have some parking structures that are good-sized buildings, we're actually going to create green walls along those, so that I think there'll be a whole fresh new look of what is a neighborhood, and there'll be a whole fresh new look of what is the landscape in a sustainable neighborhood. Also, I didn't mention it, but we're looking at some photovoltaic trellises along the roadway to generate power for some of the electrical events that we'll have along the street. And we're doing that partly because the trees are difficult, and it'll give us basically a new kind of tree, if you will, with a trellis-like element up in the air with some photovoltaics. So we're willing to have some fun and experiment with some fresh ideas here. So the next image, I think, will be for Jeffrey Heller. He's going to talk to you about the architecture and all the three-dimensional components.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. You know, there is a, maybe didn't realize it myself till tonight, there is a real strength in working with people you've worked with for a very long time, because there's a real strong unity of idea and the whole concept of this that developed over time with us, with TMG, and with David, you know, we all know and work with each other so long, that it's made for, I think, a very powerful diagram. And I think there's really only two essential messages that I'd give here, and that one is that we're going to want to take this, you know, fairly tired and obsolete plan, which is the marketplace area, and change it into the, really, the first and only concept plan at this time, which is truly pedestrian-oriented, truly public-oriented, and forward-looking in every measure. So this will be the place, and it is at the center, really, of Emeryville in many ways, that will look to the future direction where people dominate and cars don't. That's our main idea, and it's quite exciting for us, I think. So just showing how that might implement, the first phases, the first phase that would happen, would be to bring buildings in, and the buildings would be over near the Amtrak Bridge, and they would help define that gateway that links the east and west of town, both with the parking structure, which is fairly low on the south side that Denise mentioned, and the building on the north. And again, with flexibility of program, as the project develops, the buildings and the projects are designed so that they can go either residential or office as is appropriate for the site. And then over at Christie and 64th is another building project, and that is one that's scaled to step up some in height, but not a lot, and help frame the future park area, because what you'll see is as the plan develops, the people spaces are really framed by and defined by the strategy of the building designs. The circulation is really the existing circulation, except that we straighten out, I guess it's 63rd on the south side of the building on the lower left, and the rest of it is the circulation as it exists today. This is the first phase piece. And then the pedestrian and bike circulation, even at this level, is reinforced, and here you can see the beginnings of the concept of the nodes that link the various ways through the site, and strengthen those even at this early stage, including going over the bridge and coming from the retail further south along Shellmount. This is a summary, but we've gone through that. I won't dwell on this, other than to say that there's a kind of a balance of the residential units and the office square footages, so that the plan develops over time in a fairly balanced way that fits within the environmental document. And there's replacement cars that come in and come out over time in each phase, so that there's not disruptions to the way that the vehicles serve the site, and thereby minimize the impacts that might happen to the intersections around. This is a massing diagram of that first phase, and you can see that the tallest element is just north of the Amtrak Bridge, northwest of it, and the lower element is retail and parking structure that was discussed. And then the other low building at Christie and 64th, which, again, could go office or residential, depending on what makes the most sense at the time that that is brought forward. Then there's Then there's a series of opportunities that are the second phase, and they have, you know, 2A, 2B. But just to show the various second-phase opportunities, I'll just go through them, and they can mix and match as well. Now we've shown in darker gray the Phase 1 buildings. There is a building that allows you to shift Shellmount, so it becomes double-loaded, and that would be a step down office structure between the railroad tracks and a shifted Shellmount street. And what it does is it moves the street and double-loads it to begin to emphasize that pedestrian access.
What do you mean double-load?
On both sides?
It means that retail happened on both sides of the street instead of one side of the street. And activity happens on both, pedestrian activity happened on both sides of the street rather than on one.
Okay.
And this shows, this shows that in the green dash lines. Now you have people, bicycles, all kinds of opportunities on both sides of Shellmount in this particular diagram, as well as leading through the existing park and over to the other part of the project. Now, as an alternative, bless you, as an alternative, if the movie theater goes away, you could develop that corner at Shellmount and 64th where the movie theater is, and that has opportunity for retail and residential and some office opportunity as well. And that keeps, that particular strategy of the second phase would, at this point, keep Shellmount in the location it's in. But still, the other pedestrian paths are strengthened as they were in Phase 1. And that piece could add 200 residential units, 115,000 of commercial. And then, when those two are combined, with either one of those coming first, then that creates, again, the redirected Shellmount, the strengthened pedestrian path. But now, there's also a nice little detail, which is right up here, where this part of the relocated road now shifts, so it comes in at a normal angle to the relocated, let me back up, Shellmount, and creates a really nice plaza area and removes some cars. So now, that strengthens further this whole movement along Shellmount and provides a spatial destination, one of the ones that David showed you. In the final phase, the park, let me back up here, because I think that's a fairly strong piece. The park expands dramatically and is defined on its west side by a low building that has residential. But now it's framed and it becomes a major destination in this part of the city. And I think David's exactly right. It's where bike races and foot races and everything would start and stop, and civic events would happen. He talked about the retail on the park, but it's really meant to be, you know, Tavern on the Green kind of experience, a really special restaurant relationship, restaurant café relationship to a really major usable public space. And here, circulation and the pedestrian pass. And now, you can see that there are, these major nodes have been fully developed, and they all become places where people can, you know, meet each other, gather, find a little bit of, or a lot of relaxation and amenity. This is the three-dimensional view, diagrammatic, of that whole plan and how it hangs together. And from another view, from the south side, and you can see the way Shellmount works between the buildings, new and old, and the major park that we've done along Christie. And then these images, David's mentioned them a bit. I'm not going to dwell on architectural detail, other than to say that the composition of low and high buildings, the scale of the buildings, the idea of the relief of the facades of the building, where they create bays and balconies and all those other elements, and especially the retail at the lower levels, all will create this animated place, which is a place that not only would people come to be in, but people would live and work and have that mixed-use experience at a transit destination, which is what everybody is looking for, for the future. So this is meant to be everything in that kind of goal in the strongest possible sense. And then this view is, we've got Pacific Park Plaza behind us, and we're looking across the major park, and you can see the scale of the buildings and the visual textures of them and how they define the park. And to the south side, to the right side of this picture, eventually there'll be some other building that will help define it. So this, to me, is probably the most major statement that can happen about the future in Emeryville, and I think we're all pretty excited to be part of it. Sustainability was mentioned, but I think we were surprised. Our office is doing a lot right now in the whole sustainable effort, including working with the state and a variety of organizations. But what surprised us is when we submitted this for this pioneering program, this first off-the-bat time that master plans are being submitted for a LEEDs rating and certification, so we're in this pilot program, we came back with an extremely high score, and it's based on the philosophy of the plan. So right away, we get 50 points. We're already at LEED Silver without even thinking about it, and highly likely, I mean, almost without any heavy breathing, go to LEEDs Gold. And also, quite likely, we get all the way to Platinum, which is the highest rating. And right now, only government buildings and a few special corporate buildings do Platinum. So this is a very exciting time from our standpoint, and hopefully from the city's standpoint as well. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Are we almost done here?
Yeah, we're done, basically. I'm just going to say thank you and goodbye. Here we are, summary. We've been working for a few years to put together a coordinated plan for the land that was originally the Marketplace site, for the additional acquisition we did a few years ago of the 64th and Christie site. And we're looking forward to beginning this development and bringing this neighborhood of Emeryville into the next century. We're also looking at opportunities to expand this neighborhood still further. We are under contract to buy an adjacent property. So we're presenting this plan to you tonight, and we're looking forward to talking to you in the coming years about the final development plans that we bring forward to you and about possible yet additional enhancements to the Marketplace neighborhood that TMG looks forward to building. The final thing I wanted to mention was that, you know, Jeff sort of lingered on that park slide, that the advantage of having, you know, we started this like a typical developer. Look at site, do building. And what was left over was a lot of acres of parking. The community has educated us to think better and differently about our site. And that's how we went from a two-building project to a million and some odd square feet of development over the full 15 acres. Because the community, in comments on the public hearing of EIR at the Planning Commission, in meetings with them, kept saying, "God, we're so disappointed about this sea of parking that remains if you just do the first phase." At that time, that was the whole project. We want you to think more and better and harder, and so we did. And we're proud that that dialogue with the community led us to what is a plan that we initially didn't start with. And when, actually, the first folks in the community suggested it, we didn't like it very much. Like, "How are we going to do that? And how are we going to phase this parking in over time?" So the beauty of the public process, when it works well, is that we learn from one another. And I have to say, the TMG learned from the Emeryville community how to think a little harder about planning for this neighborhood. And as a result, we're really proud to be the sponsor of this project for the full 15-acre site, which, at the end of the day, can not only be one of the first green neighborhoods in the country, but can take a 15-acre entirely private-owned piece of property and add new public streets, new sidewalks, new parks. About 30% of the property, at the end of the day, will become public land again. New streets, new sidewalks, new parks. So through this partnership, we've come up with a whole that's much greater than the sum of the parts we started with three, four years ago. And we're really happy to continue that dialogue when this project goes to the Planning Commission in a month and a half or so, and then when it comes back to you for Merit's Action, I believe sometime in March is the current schedule. So thank you for giving us the time tonight to make the presentation, and we're all here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. I'd like to have public comment and then have the questions. So is there any public comment on this project? Please come forward, sign in, and...
Wendy Silvani, the Emeryville TMA. I have a letter that I'll leave with you. I'm writing in support of certification of the final EIR. This development, we were really pleased, is one of the first to include a transportation plan. That plan is both comprehensive and really substantial, addressing both the major elements like the street grid pattern, and also the finer details that make walking, biking, taking transit both a natural and easy choice for people. I think it's sensitive to overall access and connectivity that all of us in the alternative transit mode really need. We believe that the increased revenues that we'll get, combined with what will happen as part of the development's independent commitment to things like subsidizing transit passes, car sharing, creating elements that are really conducive to encouraging people to get out of their car and leave their car behind. They're also tied to results. So we believe that we'll be able to really enrich the community as a result of those. Adopting policies such as unbundling parking, sharing parking facilities, designing the sidewalks, as you saw on the slides, that have eyes on the street and they're safe and they're really walkable, and that's what they're designed to do, are important steps towards a shift in transportation models which discourage the single-occupied vehicle. Things like car sharing actually make it possible for people not to even own a car. So in closing, we'll look forward to working with all of the developments that were included and all the possible scenarios for the future in the EIR to set new standards in transportation planning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're actually not considering the EIR at this point, but, you know, this is mostly comments on the design, but we will be hearing the EIR consideration after this immediately. So, John?
Hi, my name is John Sherman. Excuse me, I live at Pacific Park Plaza, directly across the street from this project. I'm really excited about this. I'm one of the people that looks out my window and I see the surface parking lots, and I'd love to see those go away and love to see the plans that we're looking at here for the parks and open space. One of the things that's really exciting to me about this is that, when I got involved in the general plan update, I tried to get educated about what makes, truly what makes a walkable, livable neighborhood. And what I discovered through research and observation in other cities is that it's really based on mixed-use, high-density, and the transit. And this is a project that really speaks to that. A lot of you have heard me talk about transit-oriented development over and over and over again. This is it. We're doing the right stuff. We've got an Amtrak station that has 40 commuter trains a day coming through there. We need to work with that and build on our transit. If there's anything that I'd like to see different about this, maybe, maybe we could go a little bit more. I think the density that we have here is a little conservative. I think it's based on our current general plan, not in the future general plan. So when you look at this, maybe you should look at that aspect of it with possibly more high-rises that could possibly bring us more green space or things like that, variations. I'd also like to consider a linear park along Christie Avenue, if that could be incorporated in. If one of the buildings could be set back a little bit, we could have a beautiful contiguous park all along the length of Christie from 65th up to probably Powell, possibly. And then the other thing I'd like you to consider is looking at a master plan kind of thing. Before we get too far in this process, look at the big four, kind of like you did for the traffic impacts. Try and put all these together and look at the big picture, because it's not just pedestrian connections on this site, but it's the pedestrian connections from the new Transit Center, from the BRE Gateway Project, and how they all fit together. And I think there are things that we could do a little bit better, and create a synergy with these different projects. The other thing, Denise said something about an adjacent parcel. I'm hoping that that is the hole-in-the-ground, blighted area. If there's anything that the Redevelopment Agency could do to get rid of that and incorporate it into this beautiful plan, we would certainly love to see that. The other thing is the city-owned parking garage. I really like that idea, and this is another area where I think there could be great synergy between the Transit Center and this project. I think there can be a lot of shared parking between the two, so we can minimize the amount of parking. That's one of the aspects of the TOD, is to minimize the parking, go for the transit, as we had spoken about. But I think this gives us some great opportunities, so I'm really excited about this project. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Brian Donahue. I live at 4333 Holden Street. This is a rare development proposal in Emeryville that I can say I would completely support, and I think it's a really great plan. It's very resident-friendly, and it's bicycle-friendly and pedestrian-friendly. And from the unbundled parking, I like the idea of the city-owned parking structure. I criticize the council a lot for not negotiating on behalf of the residents when it comes to developers making proposals. And I think that criticism is well-founded. Here's a rare case where you don't even need to negotiate. I think this plan as it is right now is excellent, and it's very, it's the kind of development that I've been hoping we could start attracting in Emeryville. And so I can't say enough about that. I think it's a really good project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Possible to use this? We're right ahead.
Flip it around.
Twelve bucks an hour.
Try to read this for you as quickly as I can. Good evening, council members. I'm Stephen Keller, a seven-year resident at Pacific Park Plaza. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about the Marketplace redevelopment plan, and specifically the building titled, in the rendition of the plan, I saw Residential 3, but which they called Shellmount Building 2, the 14-level tower at 175 feet, which I feel is poorly placed and should not be proposed on its current site, which is shown in X there. As many of you know, I'm a strong advocate of taller buildings, but it is vital that our taller structures be carefully and properly placed in our city. The one negative I most often hear about high-rise buildings is that people in Emeryville do not want a Miami or Manhattan Skyrise. And that, I wholly agree. And the way we avoid doing that is by not placing taller structures too close to one another. By placing Residential 3 on this site, it situates it too close to the Transit Center across the tracks, thus putting taller structures too close in proximity. Is my contention that the Transit Center and its height hold precedence over the building at the Marketplace, and I believe this for three reasons. Reason three, not only because of the cost of site remediation and the needs of this building to serve as a profitable commercial endeavor, but most importantly, because the Transit Center will hold services vital to the public interest, it is well-known that this building needs to be tall. Number two, as it is known, the Transit Center site, which is between the post office and the Amtrak station, is far more constrained in terms of usable space than the Marketplace development. It cannot shift its position one way or another. But the number-one reason that the Transit Center building takes precedence is that building a full-fledged Transit Center is or should be Emeryville's number-one development priority. If we're going to do our part to mitigate traffic congestion and provide alternative transit options, thus reducing our impact of global climate change, we have to start building the infrastructures needed to accomplish those goals. The building of the Transit Center in tandem with the Marketplace will create a new and needed paradigm in infill development known as transit-oriented development. I realize that the Marketplace development must also be a profitable commercial endeavor and will also serve the public interest, but I believe that there are other places within the development where this lost square footage could be regained. Looking at the site map, I believe the southern end of the building Office 1, which is here, and the adjoining parking structure to the north here, could have their heights increased. Another place to look is at Residential 5, could for increased levels... Another place to look is at Residential Five, could for increased levels and/or the northeast corner of the building Commercial G, at the far end of the project, which could also possibly see levels added. Compared to the transit center site, which has no options of where or how to place the building, I feel that the Marketplace development has a vast number of options within this project site that could prove viable options over the current site of Residential Three. The Marketplace redevelopment plan overall is a good plan and one, as a neighbor, I support. But the taller buildings must be taken into consideration, taller buildings in the area present and proposed. Thank you for your time and your work for us.
Thank you. Eric?
Thank you, Ken. I'm Eric Holman, Managing Director for Madison Marquette, the developer of the Bay Street project. And I'm here tonight not to cast stones at Denise's project. As a fellow developer, I live in a glass house and have to be careful about that. In fact, there are many attractive features to this development plan that I think are commendable. What I'm here to talk about tonight is the process that's been used. And in particular, it's the decoupling of the EIR certification from the project approvals. What's happened here of late is an EIR was circulated that had a project, which is a project that we reviewed and had our experts review. And then, we were not aware of a switch in the project to a more intensive alternative. We haven't had the time to sit down and meet with Denise, and Denise is more than willing to meet, to understand the impacts of the project to our interests at Bay Street and particularly the Site B project. The process has sort of created a competition for scarce infrastructure, I'm afraid. And what I'd like for you to ask you to do tonight is not to delay Denise's project, but merely to move the EIR with the project approvals, keep her on track. I, like all developers, am sympathetic to that. But I need time to evaluate the impact of this larger project. There are implications of a long-term, multi-phased project to our EIR, which will have to be revised based on new base case conditions. The certification has ramifications to our project, which we have not adequately studied. Also, we need to review the allocation of mitigation measures, which we've not had a chance to do as well. And then finally, I'd like to understand better the retail vision for the project, to see to what extent it's compatible or competitive to what we plan and have at Bay Street. Ideally, there should be, and staff should be working with us, to obtain a certain synchronization of these major projects that you want to see happen here. We need time to complete that process.
You know, Eric, I haven't opened a public hearing on the EIR. This is really just comments on the initial proposal here, so when I open the public hearing, I don't know if your comments will be included because it's not within the scope of the public hearing.
I see.
So you're really addressing something before we've even got to it, so.
You're right.
So, maybe you want to hold the rest of your comments until we get to the EIR?
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this redevelopment design?
Good evening, I'm Jeff Sears with Wareham Development, and I will take the opportunity to speak later when that comes. But to speak about the project, we also, developer, and we believe some intensification on the Marketplace site could be a great benefit to Emeryville. The amount of intensification is an important issue to discuss. For 18 months, we've been part of the quote-unquote "big four," but tonight we're realizing that the Martin Groups project alone is bigger than the other three combined, so I'm not sure that it's a big four, it may be a big one and three others. And so that just puts it in a different context. But let me go to the issues I think I'd like you to think about most as you proceed through the dialogue on this project. It has the opportunity to bring amenities to Emeryville. It's proposing an unbelievably long entitlement period of 25 years. And I ask you to think about how much Emeryville's changed in the last 25 years, even in the last 10. And can you envision what the city wants that far out? Think about things such as the Kaiser Development Plan and the Chiron Development Plan, and what actually did happen with those and what hasn't happened, and how long they've been in place. So that's an important thing to consider. The public benefits and the phasing are very important to think about, too. It looks to me that there are really five big pieces, and it's possible that three of those pieces could come into place without any of the real public benefits that I heard described, the relocation of Shellmount, the creation of a new 62nd Street. It seems from Jeff Heller's presentation that what was deemed the crown jewel, the city park, won't happen until the fifth phase. That could be 25 years from now. So I think you need to link those important benefits to timeframes where you want to see them. And what, you know, what that actually becomes, I think, is important and just worthy of study. Also, the way the proposed uses can change, I mean, it would be very different to see all those buildings residential or all those buildings office. You know, a big retail component or not, so the ability for uses to change and how much control you have over that during the 25 years, I think's important. And those are the kind of things I think you'll really want to think about as the dialogue continues.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, the study session is closed. I'm going to open up the redevelopment agency and the city council meeting, but first, let's do the...
Can we stay with the study session?
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, yeah. Excuse me. All right, I thought, all right. Do we have any council comments on the study?
I do.
John?
Okay. I evaluated roughly this project with regard to the zoning ordinance, and I was happy to see that it doesn't completely conform to the zoning ordinance, but it substantially conforms, and that's something that is important to me, and so I was happy to see that. I would like more information about the subsidy. This developer is asking for what could amount to tens of millions of dollars from the redevelopment agency to funnel that money into a public parking garage. And in principle, that it is a good idea, but if the money, if the millions of dollars is really just a subsidy for this developer and not what it should be, and that is to provide for a public parking garage, then it's wrong. I agree with Jeff Sears. It was not, I don't think it was Jeff, but it was David Gates, who mentioned that the park would be a jewel. And I agree that the park is going to be a very nice amenity. For some time, I have argued that developments in Emeryville need to provide concrete benefits to the community. This project does provide some benefits, but the crown jewel is one that does not come until 20, 25 years in the future. And so that's one I think that should be part of Phase One, not Phase Three. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Any other council members, agency members?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I appreciate the work that has been done here by TMG and the direction that they have taken from both the Planning Commission and the community. This is an entirely different project than what was talked about two or three years ago. And I don't often agree with Brian, but I agree with Brian tonight. This is the kind of development, the kind of concept, the kind of greening and neighborhood vitality that we are looking for. This is early days, but I think we're started in the right direction, and I would like to, I agree with John, we need more information about how the subsidies work and how it's going to flow back through to the people of the city. We also have to take a good, long, hard look about when the public spaces and the public amenities are going to come forward. But the concept itself, the overall concept, is brilliant, and I think David has done a good job and Jeffrey has done a good job. So, I support this, I'd like to see it move forward. It's, I think, 25 years. Again, I agree with Jeff, 25-year time span is something that's going to have to be taken a good, hard look at, but this is a good project, and let's move forward.
Ruth?
I have a question for Charlie or Helen or Mabru. Procedurally, if, when approvals come back presumably in March, is that an opportunity to get into a finer-grain discussion about specific buildings, much like Stephen Keller did tonight? Or is that opportunity now during this study session?
Well, that's definitely later.
It's an EIR-related question, right?
Yeah.
You're talking about the buildings and things of that nature? Is that your question?
Yeah.
No, that's not tonight.
If it comes back for approvals through the commission and the council in March, when are we going to be able to put in, get input into kind of the finer?
Well, certainly that'll be the time when you're asked to approve it, but if you want to give more input, if you have specific information you want to do right now, be my guest.
Okay. So, with that being said, I'll have a few comments. The applicant presented many of the benefits that I think are truly benefits for the whole community. And so, overall, I think the project is really the first demonstrated project of a direction that we really want to move in. I happen to agree with Stephen Keller's comments about the placement of that residential tower. And I would add to it that it concerns me if the city approves putting more housing along the railroad tracks at all. I noticed in the EIR document, there was some language about changing from triple painting windows to just using other available methods that might be available at the time to reduce the noise. But I have concerns about putting residential right along the tracks, because even our later projects like the courtyards, there's still complaints and people are still woken up at night. So, and the second reason why I don't like that particular building there is that it seems to hide the pedestrian bridge over the tracks, and I think that's going to feel more friendly and conducive for use when it, if there has, retains a bit of an open feel and a visual line on it. So, of all the buildings and phasings and things, that's the one that kind of stands out to me as needing some work or some additional thought. And other than that, I just want to make a comment about the Neighborhood Development LEED certification. And it was, I believe, two years ago in a, one of our Washington DC lobbying trips when we went to the EPA, that we first heard about this coming online and thought that actually, so I'm glad, I see the application for this ND LEED certification in this project, but also in some other projects that we want to do in town. And I'm happy that you kind of jumped into the mix there with that. Just a question about whether you're going to have flat roofs and whether they were going to be green roofs or have solar panels, and if you had thought about that. So that's a question.
In the LEED application, we went into an enormous amount of detail about these sorts of issues, at least at a concept level. And one of the, and actually in discussing the project approval with the Planning Commission, which we haven't gotten to you yet, we've started talking about conditions of approval and how those would be formulated. And one of the concerns the commission has, which is consistent with the LEED guidelines, is that there be no large expanses of flat heat-intensifying roofs, that there be no exposed parking in a garage if it's, you know, not enclosed with a roof, that we, you know, Jeff showed you vertical green walls going up the sides of buildings. We're also talking about horizontal green, where you have like a cable line or trellis, you see a lot of this in Europe actually, and vines over time grow over the top of the building, not just the side of the building. So we'll be using a combination of rain gardens, vertical horizontal green. Not every roof will be green, but we are interested in looking at foldable tayak sunroofs as well as green roof surfaces to create a three-dimensional habitat along the sides of buildings and on the tops of buildings for birds, butterflies.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Ken?
Yeah, just a couple. Again, I'd like to follow the comments complimenting the team on the amount of work that's gone into it and that it's a much more finished project, I guess, than a lot of the ones that we see. And I know from spending some time, kind of chatting with this, chatting about this with Patty, that both Jim and Patty had a lot of input into the give-and-take process here before it even got to the commission, and I can certainly see the handiwork of those efforts there. So I'm thankful to not only the developer for being open to that, but also to them for the time that they've put in. In terms of the park, I don't know, we have a park there now. You know, we can all debate how usable it is, and it's definitely got some flaws that we want to fix. But I'm not as concerned about where in the phasing it fits because of the other things that you're doing. I'd certainly want to move it up as soon as we can, but it may not be possible to do that. I think I'm more concerned, as others have expressed, about the length of the phasing. And so I'm, you know, I'm kind of open to considering all that within the prospect. One of the things that I don't understand also in a specific is, there's mention in the write-up about the Amtrak elevator working somehow in conjunction with the building. I'm not sure how that works, and I'd like to see some detail on that, because as we all know, that's been a huge problem for us in terms of vandalism and so forth. So, you know, in one sense, I think having a building there will certainly put more eyes and ears on that whole thing. I don't know how I feel honestly about the location of the high-rise. I'm not as concerned, I think, as Steve is about where it goes. And I think anything we can do to enhance the overcrossing and make it safer and bring more density to its use will be a positive thing. So I'm not as concerned about it being hidden as I am of trying to get a sense, and Steve, I'd like to kind of chat with you some more about that down the road. But I'm open to the building being there, I just haven't really thought through some of the things that Steve raised today. One last area is that I didn't hear anything in here about potential improvements to the existing office tower that I think is really not very attractive. And I would hope that somewhere in the process of these phases, that we don't just look at building a great new thing that surrounds it, but that we try to enhance it also, and maybe that's being planned. But it, I don't think any of us are overly proud with the, about the architecture there. So, it's a great, great start from where we are, and I don't consider it just a start. I think we're definitely headed in the right direction, so congratulations to the team.
Great, thank you, Dick. And I just want to make some comments. You know, for 15 years ago, I worked really hard to try to get that road next to the building. I mean, John Flores and I, that's one thing we really agreed on, was trying to move that road.
The only thing?
Well, just one of the things. But moving that road next to the building really creates an urban environment there, something that's long overdue and something that I strongly support here. I mean, in addition to creating a street grid, I mean, you know, the city has these large parcels of land, so creating a street grid there makes a neighborhood, and it really makes it very exciting. And Jeff, I have to commend you, you've done an excellent job here of designing this, and, you know, you get better, we all hopefully get better as we get older, so, you know, so there's my comments there. So, anyway, so with that, I would close the study session, and then we'll move into the agency agenda. I'll open that up, we'll do public comments, do the consent calendar, and then we'll get right back to the EIR consideration.
Mayor Bukowski, can you open the city council meeting, too? We have two, okay.
So we're adjourned our special meeting, correct?
Right, so the special meeting is adjourned, and the joint meeting of the City Council and Redevelopment Agency is now open. Would you please call the roll?
Agency and council member Davis?
Here.
Agency member, sorry, agency and council member Fricki?
Here.
Agency and council member Cassis?
Here.
Vice Chair and Vice Mayor Atkins?
Present.
Chair and Mayor Bukowski?
Here. All rise and fall to the flag. It's now behind us, folks. Thank you. Is there any public comment on items that are not on the Redevelopment Agency agenda? Anyone?
Or the city council agenda?
Or the city council agenda, yeah, we want to do it at the same time.
Brian Donahue, 4333 Holden Street. Here is the contents of a letter I intend on giving to my neighbors, and it's addressing the city council specifically, Councilmember Cassis. Recently, Councilmember Dick Cassis spoke of the last Emeryville election as the most fraught with outside interest in the history of modern Emeryville. Cassis got this right, but not in the way in which he meant. He incorrectly referred to the influence of organized labor in our town. The real influence of consequence, as we all know, is not from labor, it's from developers, more specifically from large corporate developers with interest in future projects in our town. This last election saw the rise of the political, of political action committee politics in Emeryville with the emergence of MPAC, an influential big corporate developer-funded lobbying committee, whose function is to smooth the way for money contributors' development in our town. MPAC funded the reelection campaign of the three incumbents Nora Davis, Ken Bukowski, and Ruth Atkin. In the wake of their recent victory, we have seen how the lobbying power of MPAC is affecting how public policy is created, to the detriment of the public, in my opinion. A right out of the blocks post-election example of this is the misnamed Transit Center with its Horton Street mega tower, more than twice the height allowed by our zoning ordinance. The developer here is the same that has a well-documented record of constructing substandard buildings in our town. Now, after the election, this developer has decided to sweeten his side of the deal and increase his profits with a multimillion-dollar city-funded subsidy. This unfortunately was not enough to bat an eye for the three incumbents, plus Cassis, who have given the go-ahead to trash our zoning ordinance and grant millions of dollars in this government giveaway. Next will come the same out-of-town developer demanding the council majority cast aside our zoning ordinance again for his looming future projects adjacent to the north. So the question is, why the hell do we even have a general plan and a zoning ordinance at all? They're obviously too weak to stand up to the lobbying power against them by MPAC. All this does not bode well for democracy in Emeryville, or us, the residents. A horde of corporate development firms salivating at the prospects of a wide-open Emeryville, mixed with a council majority desperate to get reelected and predisposed to helping developers is a recipe for disaster for Emeryville residents, the clear losers in this equation. Cassis may engage in his foaming-at-the-mouth xenophobic rants against the interests of the working poor, that's after all what he does, but one only needs to see the outcome of the last election to see where the real power in Emeryville lies. Councilmember Cassis will not admit to any of this because he himself is also the beneficiary of these outside corporate interests. During his last reelection campaign, I checked with a city clerk, and I found virtually all his major campaign donors were from huge, out-of-town corporate development firms with designs on developing in Emeryville. I say it's no coincidence, Councilmember Cassis has so richly rewarded these big corporate interests in the intervening two years since his last reelection. As for me, I'm just a powerless resident, like those of you watching on television, only with the advantage of 27 years in this town. But if anyone should doubt what I say here, I invite you to see for yourself. Watch the council meetings. Watch and see if these developers are successful in getting our general plan and zoning ordinance cast aside palmele by these right-wing council members. Just watch, then ask yourself, what, for instance, if I wanted to do in addition to my own home, would I get the same treatment as these big-time developers? I have no doubt that these four council members will continue to attack me and my pro-resident advocacy, that's after all what they do with dissenters here in Emeryville, but to the citizens of Emeryville, I ask you to just watch how they vote on the big development projects that are brought before them. Just watch and then see for yourself, and you can decide for yourself. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
It's not on the redevelopment, it's only on the city council.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sarah Arnett, and my husband Michael and I are the new owners of The Curves in Emeryville, and we just wanted to come and introduce ourselves to everyone. Curves is a fitness facility that's specially designed for women, and it features a workout that's fun, fast, and safe, and we're having a grand reopening and ribbon-cutting with the Emeryville Chamber, and we would like to invite you and the entire city of Emeryville to come out and join us and have a great time. Curves is a place where neighbors can come meet other neighbors, and women can get healthy and have a fun time in a very supportive way. It's a place where women will encourage other women, and you'll feel, you'll be in a comfortable environment, and it's also a place where you can change lives. Now, Curves' mission is to strengthen all women, and Curves typically and traditionally has catered to women between ages of 30 and 50, but my focus, in addition to the age range of 30 and 50, would also be on teen girls. I'm very concerned with the health of teen girls, and I'm working with Emeryville High School in getting their teen girls over to work with us with a sponsorship program that we created just for them, and in addition to them doing a 30-minute workout with us, they'll also have classes, 30-minute sessions, very small workout sessions and very small talks on creative communication, personal development, and nutrition. So I just wanted to introduce myself, and just to let you know The Curves is here, we're at 4550 San Pablo Ave, Suite C, in the old Berkeley Farms Building, and I hope to see you all there.
And when is your opening?
I'm sorry, January 31st, from 5:30 to 7:00.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to town.
Appreciate it.
And they are open off.
On the microphone, on the microphone.
They are open every day. I have experienced Curves for several years, although I'm frail in health, it's absolutely a fantastic outfit. The atmosphere is friendly, joyous, wonderful, and it's certainly very good for each woman and young women, and the idea of there to get young, maybe rather big kids or girls to come and exercise is absolutely grand. And so you are all invited. Thank you.
Thank you, Ladi.
Yeah, sign in, please. Okay, great.
I mean, it's unfortunately not good for men, it's best for women, because you can clap.
Okay. Thanks, Ladi. Is there any other public comment? Okay, let's move to, I want to do one public hearing before we get to the EIR, and that is for the school district, that would be agency item 5A, and that's a resolution of the redevelopment agency of the city of Emeryville approving a public facilities loan agreement with the Emeryville Unified School District in the amount of $2,836,634, making findings pursuant to Health and Safety Code 33445 and approving $1,418,342 each from the 1976 Project Area Capital Fund and the Shellmount Capital Fund to, for the Emeryville Center of Community Life Capital Improvement Project. Okay?
Mayor, that is also item 6A.
Right, item 6A.
It's a hearing on both the city council and for the redevelopment.
Right, so this will be a joint public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, so staff presentation, and then we'll open the public hearing.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Mayor Bukowski, and members of the agency board and city council, Admin Soon Finance Director. Come before you to seek the approval for a public facilities loan agreement of $2,836,684 with the Emery Unified School District, for you to make the findings pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 33445, and to appropriate $1,418, I mean $418,342 each from the 1976 Project Area Capital Fund and the Shellmount Project Area Capital Fund. Back in September of 2007, staff in the Emery Unified School District began discussions on AB 1290 pass-through payments due to the district. After several meetings, we found out that the district was interested in capitalizing the cash flow of the pass-through payments through a bond issuance, the purpose of which is to partially fund various capital facilities, including a two-story modular classroom building at Anna Yates Elementary School, the replacement of Plainfield, of the Plainfield at Emery Secondary School, and the renovation of the industrial arts building, also at Emery Secondary School. Staff suggested an alternative to the district's planned bond issuance in the form of a public facilities loan agreement, as it would have actually multiple benefits, including avoiding the bond issuance costs, expediting the funding for the district, and reducing the administrative burden associated with a bond issue. The loan agreement will also allow the district to begin implementing the Emeryville Center of Community Life, supporting its early program goals. ECCL, as it is also called, is a vision for the centralized and coordinated delivery of social, educational, recreational resources for everyone in the Emeryville community. This public facilities loan agreement also requires that a public hearing be conducted and that certain findings and determinations be made consistent with Health and Safety Code Section 33445. These findings and determinations are that the construction of the district projects will be of the benefit of the 1976 project area and the immediate neighborhood for which the district projects are located, including the Shellmount project area, that no other reasonable means of financing the district projects are available to the community, and that the payment of the funds pursuant to the agreement for the cost of the construction of the district projects will assist in the elimination of one or more blighting conditions within both the 76 area and the Shellmount area, consistent with the agency's implementation plan adopted pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 33490. Funding for this public facilities loan is available through an appropriation of $1,418,342 each from the 1976 Project Area Capital Fund and the Shellmount Project Area Capital Fund, sorry.
Excuse me. Mayor, the city attorney told me that since the proceeds are going to be used primarily at the elementary school, Anna Yates, that I have to recuse myself because my house is next to the playground, next to the schoolyard.
Okay.
So I'm going to step down.
Okay, great, thank you. Continue, Ed.
Right, I'm actually finalizing it, and at this time, I'd like to ask Assistant Superintendent Joe Franz. I also see Superintendent Steve Wesley here, but they're going to do a short presentation, and then I'll come back to take any questions and open up the public hearing.
Okay.
Good evening, council members. I too thank you for your public service.
Please introduce yourself.
So I am Stephen Wesley, the interim superintendent for the Emery Unified School District. Mr. Franz is going to show you what the project looks like. As he's trying to find a way to set these drawings up, there are a couple of things I'd like for you to know about the process that we've used. Number one, clearly the school district is growing. This appropriation allows us to keep pace with the growth. We are anticipating a significant increase in our school age population, and the first building to benefit from expansion capabilities is the elementary school, Anna Yates Project. The project is not just a facilities project, it is also an internal reworking of the school district's educational plan to accommodate the growth and the expansion that's been discussed here tonight in Emeryville. Our schools are currently now, because of the city's general plan, under reconstruction. We are aligning our curriculum programs with themes that are consistent with where the city is going. This particular Anna Yates project has a special interest in embracing science, and you'll see a significant commitment to a new science facility, which is a rich and rare facility at an elementary school, thus giving us the distinction of having a science-magnet elementary school with a biotechnology emphasis. Already in existence at this school is an arts integration program. So as we think about the general plan of the city, as we think about the redevelopment concepts of the city, we're using the funds, these appropriation funds, not only for construction, but also construction to accommodate science and the integration of art in the context of our elementary school. The other things that we're doing with the appropriations is making sure that we no longer run schools for 185 days. So the expansion capability that we're now enjoying is the expansion capability of schools that are open year-round and schools that are open to the entire community. So all of the considerations for the expansion on this elementary school project are being done to accommodate a more citywide, total across-the-board, full calendar access to our schools.
Does that include adult education, too?
It includes adult, it includes birth to senior citizens. And in that context, our schools are now the first step toward becoming centers of community life. The elementary school will become a center for community life for science, arts integration, for families zero to senior citizens. So the concept is that the appropriations is not just to build more classrooms in an elementary school, the concept is to make the elementary school, and then subsequently the high school and the middle school program user-friendly, zero to senior citizens. If I may just briefly comment on the phrase used earlier tonight, crown jewel, it would be remiss for the superintendent to not point out that clearly all of the concepts related to the development of Emeryville are intimately dependent upon, the school district has to take the preeminent position of being the crown jewel, or else there is no development. We hear that call, and what you're about to see in the use of our appropriations is a school district that is refacing itself to keep pace, and not just to keep pace, but to lead the way with the new Emeryville's direction. So, Mr. Franz, you can explain how the new elementary school is now looking like a totally new elementary school?
Joe Franz, Assistant Superintendent for Business Services with the Emery Unified School District. Thank you, Superintendent Wesley and City Council. I do want to first express our appreciation of the school district for the collaboration that we've had with the redevelopment agency in planning the AB 1290 pass-through payments and how those payments could be used to make available now the capital that are needed to forward the Center of Community Life projects that we are working on in the school district. And as Superintendent Wesley mentioned, the first of those is the Anna Yates Growth Project, and particularly that is the basis on which we are requesting the loan is to do that. The whole project will cost approximately $9 million, the state will be providing us with $4.5 million in matching funds, and we need to match the other half. We have developer fees, which will match well over a million of that, but we will need this loan in order to complete the match process, to complete the construction of this building. And this building is not just, as Superintendent Wesley said, a, we do have, there are 20 classrooms that you can see there in the building, which will be replacing 13 one-story portables that are on the yard right now. So it will combine, increase the capacity for students and programs at the elementary school, as well as increase the playground space available at the elementary school. And you may see there that there is a large artificial turf area, which will be replacing a portion of the blacktop there to provide both the students and the community who can use the yard during non-school times with opportunity for more, for the kinds of activities that can only be done on a soft turf field. In addition, Superintendent Wesley mentioned the Elementary Science Center, which is going to going to be a renovation of what's currently the kindergarten wing, the wing that you see on the far left, on the two, the buildings that you see that are closest to the audience in these drawings, that, those are, that's the kindergarten wing, which is currently two kindergarten classes, but the wall between them will be torn out, and it will be turned into an elementary science center with gardens surrounding the science center to allow our kids and others the opportunity to engage in, enrich selection of science activities in collaboration with the science partners that we have, including Novartis here in the city. And the, as you can see, there is also a redesign of the yard, which includes both the blue areas you see are new construction areas, and the, in addition to the classroom building at the top, there's a substantial new area that's covered walkways and covered areas, which will allow for our children to be able to be outside in the rain without getting wet. So it does also provide a lot more flexibility, and as you can see, the actual design of the yard is designed to take advantage of the theme of Timoskal Creek running through our community, so it does have a creek theme running through there. Those are not, that's not gonna be actual water, however, only a painted creek, but it will, we do hope through that to help encourage our community and students' awareness of Timoskal Creek and the natural, some of the natural resources that are in Emeryville. So I just, with that, the school district would be happy to entertain any questions you have, but as, as your finance director, Edmund Swin, said, this is, we are happy to, if this is possible, to provide this advance on these funds, because it does save us the cost of capitalizing the AB 1290 payments ourselves, and certainly enables us to move forward more rapidly. We are currently planning to begin construction of this in June, with, beginning just in two months, with the preparation of the old Emsa site on 61st Street to be a one-year relocation site for the elementary school, while the construction proceeds at the current NE8s site.
Great, well, thank you very much. Lottie and I open the public hearing. If the presentation's done, then we'll take comments from the members of the agency. Public hearing is now open. Anybody wanting to come forward, please speak at this time?
My name is Brian Donahue. I have a daughter, a two-year-old daughter, that my wife and I have every intention sending to Emeryville public schools. We are predisposed to the idea of public schools, but we're not willing to sacrifice our daughter's education to some abstract concept of the notion that public schools are good somehow. So we wanna send our daughter to a good public school, and I have a couple of questions. One, there are, there are buildings on the NE8s elementary school grounds right now that are referred to as, I think, I believe they refer to them as portable, I guess also known as temporary. And so at least one of those are being replaced, from what I understand, is the question I'd like to have. And then, so, is it being replaced with a building, with an actual foundation, a real building, or is it going to be replaced with another portable or temporary building? I guess.
Well, actually, just make your comments, and then if they wanna address them.
If it is going, I'm, I'm not inclined to send my daughter to a school that has just temporary, replaced with temporary buildings. I think we should be building real buildings here, and it's sending a message to the children and to the people of Emeryville that basically, you don't really matter that much. You matter only enough to build temporary buildings, portable buildings. I think that's the wrong message to send. I think we should be, I'm, I'm a little nervous that this ECCL concept is taking focus away from the actual schools that we have here and now, and I would like to see real buildings built, not portable buildings. Thanks.
Thank you. So any other public comment? Lottie, did you wanna comment?
My comment is not so much regarding the building, but the quality of the teachers and the curriculum, and I feel the emphasis here is not large enough, not big enough, to really have quality education for the children. It's, I think, of great vital importance, more than a building, a pretty building, or where they are safe from a few drops of rain, but quality. And so I think the effort should really be made, that a lot of the funding should go into the best qualified teachers. Thank you.
Lottie, I think these funds can only be used for capital improvements, they can't be used for educational purposes, so I just wanted to bring that point out.
Do you have other sources, may I ask?
Not from, these funds would come from sources that cannot be used for anything else but capital improvement, so, so we're looking at something here where we have no other options with this money.
And there are no alternative ways you can see how we can manufacture gold for the children?
Well, we might be able to do that, but not with these funds.
Yes, understood.
Especially on the use of these capital funds.
Thanks, Ken.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, the public hearing is closed, agency members?
I would like to, I just have one question, and you're talking about the growth of the school district. I thought the plan for the school district was, it was gonna be three schools, 400, 400, 400, that the maximum we were looking at was 1,200 students. Has that changed?
No. It's important, I hope, that the council recognizes that this project is a project to meet needs that we have right now. Right now, we are short of space and of playground space at NE8s Elementary School. And so the purpose of this project is to, for the next 10 or 15 years, to ensure that we have sufficient facilities to educate our children, but it does not replace our larger version that we are, continue to be committed to working on through the City Schools Committee and the Emeryville Youth Services Advisory Committee, to build a Center of Community Life, which would consist of multiple sites. We're not prejudging whether this would necessarily be or not be one of the sites of that, but we're certainly not assuming that it is such a site of that.
That answers my question. I am absolutely in favor of this. It's a very creative, and I wanna thank Edmund and you, John, for coming up with this solution, because it's a good use of public money, it's a good use of both redevelopment and city money, to invest in our children and the wider community. So I'm very much in favor of it.
Thank you. Any other agency members? Ruth?
I just wanna comment, I also am fully supportive of this, and wanna just make explicit that a great deal of planning on the part of the school community has gone into what to do with their NE8s facility. And I remember other public meetings and ideas that were brought forward about really how to meld art and science there at NE8s, and this is the first example of what I hope will happen more and more in this community, where facilities are being built around program needs and program visions. And so this is a trial run to meet existing needs right now that can, it is my belief that the best education can happen when there's all kinds of resources, including good teachers, but also good facilities, that can support the educational endeavors that are there. And this represents far more planning than meets the eye tonight about what kind of physical supports the programmatic development here really necessitates. So I'm very excited, this is a good trial run, for how to build facilities that meet programmatic needs in the future. And as a piece of this, I am looking forward to hearing about the, any lessons learned in implementing this, but this is a, this is a great start, and I couldn't be more enthusiastic.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah. Can I just, before I make my comments, could somebody answer Brian's question?
Yes, for Mr. Donahue and others in the community, let me assure them that this, we are replacing temporary portables with a permanent classroom building built on permanent foundations. It is modular, which means that the walls are gonna be constructed off-site and brought into the site and tilted into position, which does allow us to construct both more cheaply and more quickly in this circumstance, both of which were important considerations that we had. However, it is a permanent building, it is treated as such by the Division of School Architects, which approves all new school buildings, and which considers it to meet all required codes for a permanent school building.
Right, great. And then the comments that I'd like to make, just in the broader picture of the Center of Community Life and where we're going with all of this, I know that initially, we had hoped to get the AC Transit site and really consolidate everything in one place, because it was adjacent to the high school, and since we know that that's not happening now, we've had to kinda rethink the physical part of the plant, and really sort of adopt the thinking that the Center of Community Life is not in one place, it's in a number of places. And certainly, the NE8s for the time being is one of those spots. And, you know, we also have the middle school, and you're deciding what to do that and how to use that, and, but at the same time, I want people to be reassured that we're moving forward with the broader concept, because we're out for request, request for proposals for the design of the site that will be more central, which is the PG&E site. Unfortunately, that site's not large enough, not as large as the AC Transit site, to hold everything that we had hoped to hold in one place. So this is, in terms of the bricks and mortar part of the whole program, this is a step in dealing with our current needs, looking forward to the future as we go forward in a number of places. When I first knew that this was gonna be on the agenda, I hesitated for a moment, because I know that, first of all, so that if it's not totally clear from our finance director, these monies that we're loaning are monies that the school is gonna be entitled to on pass-through funding from future development. So it's not like, it's not money that you're just being given, it's sort of in advance on what you're gonna be entitled to. But I was concerned, because the way we're going to do that is, as a city, is we've already set aside $25 million to go towards the Center of Community Life, and this is the first real project that's come along where we're dipping into that fund. And my first reaction was, gee, I hate to see us dip into that fund, because I know that the idea is, is that we would have that, and the school would match that, and we would move forward together towards acquiring and cleaning up and building a new facility. But when I talked to Pat O'Keefe about it, Pat was, just gave me a whole different perspective, and he said, you know, what's exciting about this is that it shows that we're not waiting, that we're moving forward. This is the first step in that process of doing what we're doing. And Lottie, to your concern, the, one of the exciting things in why I ran again is largely because of this Center of Community Life, and what it can mean to our community across the board. And what's been exciting to be part of is that the whole educational part of this has been moving forward well ahead of the facilities. It's been happening, and if you just look at the improvement in the scores, and all of the wonderful things that have happened, and the way the students are engaged, and it's just, it's a much better environment, better teachers are being attracted, some teachers that were deadwood have been gotten rid of, things have been on a real sharp increase. We know we have a long way to go. So in the big picture of where we're going with the Center of Community Life, and what it can mean to Emeryville of bringing us, finding places to bring us all together, which is something that this community lacks, it's really having a huge impact. Just one example, my downstairs neighbor is a retired math teacher, he now over mentoring three students in calculus at the school. That's something that wouldn't have happened five years ago. People are feeling comfortable there, they're feeling engaged there, they're involved there. So I wanna, I want people to understand that, I don't want us to just have that fear, well, you're gonna just build buildings, and you're not gonna improve the education. The educational improvement is happening every single day, but as Ruth said, this construction piece is a part of improving the facility, so that better teachers will wanna come and teach here, and so that students will have a better environment, and one that really works towards this higher level of education we're trying to get to. So my compliments to the school and to the continuing combination of the city and school working together, I think it's really exciting, and I know that we're gonna have a place down the road that people are gonna be standing in line to get one of those 1,200 seats. Our people will always have first shot at that, but I know that where we're going with math and science and technology here, this is gonna be a place, it's gonna be a huge magnet for anybody that wants to move their children forward in the community. So I fully support this, thank you for your hard work.
I would move both resolutions.
I had just a couple of comments quickly.
All right.
Is this an example here where we're gonna have any, where the use of city funds is gonna bring in funds that we would not otherwise get to the area here?
I think undoubtedly, yeah.
Well, in the first sense, that this qualifies us for state matching funds, which we need in order to complete this. We have to match the state funds 50/50 in order to receive the state funding for this project, and we don't have enough construction facilities funds in our current facilities, capital facilities funds, to make that full match. So if we didn't have these redevelopment funds, we would have to scale back this project into a smaller project.
Okay, so we're getting additional funds because we're gonna have this match here, right?
Correct.
Okay, great, okay.
And Ken, excuse me, just before you go forward to that, Joe, would you say again where the total funds are coming from, the pots that are coming from?
Project is approximately $9 million, and one half of that comes, it's, we're fully qualified through the state for this. They provide 50% of the soft and hard funds, presuming that at least 60% of the entire budget gets spent on hard costs, and the other half, $4.5 million, is being met through a combination of our developer fees, that should come through the contributions we get from developers as they build projects here in Emeryville, and the redevelopment funds.
So part of it, you confused it just a little bit, part of it is money that's the schools right now, not that...
That's right. We receive quarterly the share of development fees, and we have well over a million dollars in that current fund right now.
Okay, so four and a half of the nines coming from the state is matching fund, the other four and a half is a combination of this loan and the money that the school has?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, great. And then the other question is, you know, in the area of adult education, I have so many people in this community asking me how they can become computer literate, and I think that I'd like to see that one of the first programs that we can implement for adult education here, so. Okay, so with that, I have a motion.
A second.
Do you call it all, please?
That's for both the agency and the city.
Agency, right. Agency, item 5A, and City Council, item 6A.
Agency and Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
And Agency and Councilmember Fricki is recused. Agency and Councilmember Cassis.
Aye.
Vice Chair and Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Chair and Mayor Bukowski.
Aye. Okay, now I'd like to go to...
Steve and Joe, thank you for coming tonight for your time.
Thank you. I don't think, let's just do the consent calendar.
Okay, I've had a request to finish the consent ca...
I move the consent calendar.
Second.
On the redevelopment agency?
Yeah.
Redevelopment agency.
Thank you. Do I have a, okay, do you have a second?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, without objection, that's approved. Okay, then, can we, do you wanna do the status report on the pedestrian bridge now?
No.
Yes, okay, let's go to...
We've got all these folks that are here for this, let's get back to the EIR.
Right, okay. Item, item seven.
8A.
On the City Council agenda, resolution to City Council, City of Emeryville, certifying the final impact report for the marketplace redevelopment project and making findings required by California Environmental Quality Act. Charlie, Brian?
Senior Planner Miru Desai again will make the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Bukowski and council members. The City Council has requested to certify the final EIR for the marketplace redevelopment project as recommended by the planning commission. In certifying the final EIR, the council must make the following findings: that the final EIR has been completed in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and that the final EIR reflects the city's independent judgment and analysis. The EIR was prepared by our city's consultant, LSA, and I will hand over to LSA to give a presentation over the overall process of the environmental review that took place for this project. And before she does that, I'd like to state what certification of a final EIR means. Certification of the final EIR does not in any way constitute approval of the proposed project or any alternative contained in the analysis. It does not signify city's preference for any particular mitigation measure, development plan, or design for the site. Certification means only that the City Council believes that the final EIR contains complete and appropriate anal... and appropriate analysis of identified environmental impacts, alternatives, and mitigation measures upon which to base future policy and development decisions with regard to the Marketplace project area, and that the FAR, FEIR, or the final EIR reflects the independent judgment and analysis. Before I give it over to Lynette here, I'd like to point this out, you should find this on the desk, it's an errata sheet. It basically corrects a couple of typos on the mitigation measures which would apply to the said language in draft EIR, as well as to responses to comments. With that-
Meru, before you leave, I have a question of clarification. Does approval of this in EIR in any way impact the potential development of any other site in the city?
No, it does not.
Okay, so any concerns that any other developers may have that moving forward with this document does not in any way impair any consideration that might be given on any other development site?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Well, since you raised that question, I'm not sure that that makes total sense because, look, the concern that's being raised, that was raised earlier here, is that the Big Four Traffic Study was done primarily looking at those four projects and what they would do to traffic, which is a huge concern of the people that live here. And in the meantime, as this has gone forward, this project has virtually doubled in size. Well, that has an impact on the other developers. Because if all the traffic, or a greater percentage of the traffic that's being considered as something that we can work into these four developments, and one project takes more of the traffic pie, that's going to have an impact and a fallout to the other people. So, to say that it doesn't impact their developments doesn't seem right.
Well, it is reasonable because this is only a study of environmental impacts. This is not a consideration of a project approval. Now, if we were considering a project approval of the maximum build-out, then yes, it would impact other potential projects. But because this is only an analysis of the environmental impacts, it does not in any way impair any other project from moving forward with any consideration. Just because you approve 1.2 million square feet here doesn't mean you have to approve a project for 1.2 million. You could approve one for a half a million, and then whatever capacity might be left, so to speak, would be allowed with other projects. So, that's why I asked that specific question.
The other thing I would say is that the EIR looks at the traffic impacts.
Of all the other projects at the same time, so.
This EIR looks at the traffic impacts.
So, that's why I raised that question, okay?
I think I can clarify some of those issues in my presentation as well.
Okay, go right ahead. Please move forward.
Can we get the PowerPoint on? There we go. Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm going to try to make my presentation on the EIR that's before you this evening relatively brief, but if there's areas where you would like me to go into more detail, I will be happy to, so just let me know. But it is a very voluminous document. Before you, you should have the draft EIR, which is the big thick one, and then also the response to comments document, which is the thinner of the two. So, tonight, the purpose of the meeting is to review the final EIR, which includes both the draft EIR and the responses to comments document. Those documents together constitute the final EIR. Consider the adequacy of that document. Does it provide an adequate evaluation of the proposed project and the alternatives that are described in the draft EIR? It's not to grant an approval on the project, it's simply to say that there's an adequate environmental analysis for you all to make an informed decision about approval of the project when you get to that point. And then, finally, is, once, if you do determine that it's adequate, analysis provides adequate information based on the requirements of SEQA, then consider certification of the EIR. Decision-making body cannot consider approval of a project such as the Marketplace project, whether it's the project that's described as the proposed project in the draft EIR or one of the alternatives until following a certification of an EIR. So, this is the first step you have to take to then consider approval of a project, which then could impact other projects and what infrastructure is available to those projects. So, I'm going to go over the SEQA process, just to give you a quick overview, beginning to end, talk briefly about the projects and alternatives that were considered in the EIR, and then the final EIR findings, and then our recommendation. So, SEQA process began on this project back in December of 2005, when a notice of preparation was issued and notifying agencies and interested individuals that the city would be preparing an EIR on that. A scoping session was held before the Planning Commission. The draft EIR was then published in June of 2007. It was available for public review for 45 days. And then, we received comments on it, prepared, SEQA requires that all the comments that you receive on a draft EIR that relate to the environmental issues and not the project merits, that you provide written responses to each of those comments. That's what's in the smaller volume that's before you this evening. So, we provide written responses to each of the comments. And then, finally, we're to the point where you're considering the EIR, the Planning Commission considered the adequacy of the EIR back in December, as Meru mentioned earlier this evening, and unanimously recommended certification of the document. And then, once you complete that step, you can move on to considering the project. Did you have a question?
Okay, now, I have a process question for you. I was told that while the comment period was open, the only project that was being considered was the smaller project, and that after the close of the comment period, the alternative was developed with more intense use. So, there are some folks that feel that they didn't have a chance to comment on the consideration of the larger project because the comment period was closed. So, can you address that?
Yes, I can. That happened, that is correct, that after the, based on the comments received on the draft EIR, both staff and the project applicant worked together to develop an alternative that responded to some of the comments that were received. We did an analysis of that alternative after the public review period closed and determined, and that analysis is included, I believe, in Chapter Three, refresh my memory here. I'm sorry, Chapter Five of the Response to Comments document. And we went through, and under SEQA, you have to, when a project changes, which often projects do change, and oftentimes, we hope they change for the better as the project, as the process evolves. I mean, one of the purposes of SEQA is to get public input into a project and inform the project. That process happened. We evaluated that project to make sure, to determine, not to make sure, but to determine whether or not any, that the implementation of that alternative would result in any impacts beyond what was identified and analyzed in the draft EIR. And we considered it relative to the proposed project that was evaluated in the draft EIR, as well as the Main Street alternative. And essentially found that the impacts that would result from the reduced Main Street alternative, which was the alternative that was introduced, would be somewhere in the middle of what were identified for the proposed project and for the Main Street alternative. And made a final determination that the impacts were adequately disclosed in the draft EIR, and no new impacts or mitigation measures would be required that weren't previously presented. So, it's somewhat of a complicated process. It is all explained in here. The Response to Comments document was actually circulated and made available at the end of November, so that has been out now for approximately 45 days.
Mayor Bukowski.
Continue, so, go ahead.
I'd just like to elaborate a little bit on something that Ms. Dias has said, just to make it real clear. The Main Street alternative, of which the new project that you're referring to is a reduced version, was included in the draft EIR. It was available for public review and comment during the draft EIR comment period, and it was analyzed in the draft EIR at a level of detail that would have allowed it to become the project that could be approved. So, the project that's now being considered, the so-called Reduced Main Street alternative, is a smaller version of something that was in the draft EIR and was available for public review and comment during that time.
But can I, can I, but Charlie, isn't it, you know, we had another project was the main one that everybody thought was going to happen. So, people didn't bother to comment on this increased project, and then all of a sudden, when we bring the little, you know, this more dense project from the back burner to the front burner, then the folks that thought they had already made the comments necessary relative to the one they thought was being brought forward are kind of left in a vacuum. So, yeah, while there's an opportunity to comment on that earlier, the reality is, that's not the project anybody thought was going forward at that time. I mean, isn't that true? Or am I, have I got it wrong?
Well, the way SEQA works in an EIR is you have a project and you also have alternatives to the project.
Right.
That's always required in an EIR. And it, well, I don't know how well the SEQA process is explained in the draft EIR, but that's a standard part of the SEQA process, that one of the alternatives might end up being the project that is actually approved. That's the purpose of having alternatives in the draft EIR.
No, I understand that.
In the interest of fairness, though, if you're going to consider a larger product project, don't those folks that commented on the smaller project then have the opportunity to comment on a larger project?
They could have commented on it during the public review period of the draft EIR. It was in there.
Okay, all right, all right. So, are you finished with your presentation?
Actually, no. I had just begun.
Continue.
But I, but I'll skip over a lot of it based on where, what we've discussed so far. So, but I think it would probably be helpful for us to go through it in a more linear fashion, beginning to end, so you understand what's in it and kind of where we are.
Is that a nice way of asking us to be quiet?
Well, I like to talk to you, so I can appreciate questions and answer them. So, the project considered is the project that is a smaller version of what you saw this evening, and it was for a 15-acre site, same site area, involved demolition of 26,000 square feet and building of 77,000 square feet of new retail restaurant space and then 340 residential units. And then, so that was the project that was analyzed. And in addition, the alternatives were, and I will talk about those a little bit at the end of the presentation and talk through each of the ones that we considered. In the Response to Comments document, the, we've talked about what's in there a little bit, but there's copies of each of the comment letters received, there's written responses to each of the SEQA-related comments, and they're enumerated. And then, there is in that document, consideration of the Reduced Main Street alternative, a reduced version of the alternative that was analyzed at a level of detail similar to the proposed project in the draft EIR. And then, there's a chapter that includes corrections and revisions to any of the texts of the draft EIR that came out of the comments received, the responses, and any technical corrections that, and that part of the document included very minimal changes and nothing that substantially changed the findings of the document. The topics that were addressed in the EIR include land use, population, and housing. The topics shown in bold are the areas where we identified significant impacts and recommended mitigation measures. I'm not going to go through each one of those impacts and mitigation measures, they're detailed in there, and we want to end sometime this evening. Traffic, circulation, parking, air quality, noise and vibration, hazardous materials and public safety, geology, soil, seismicity, hydrology and storm drainage, cultural and paleontological resources, aesthetic resources, public services and utilities, wind, shade and shadow. As you can see, it was a very comprehensive document. It evaluated each of the topics required under SEQA. Many of the topic areas identified impacts that were less than significant or that they would be reduced to a less than significant level with the mitigation measures recommended. For the project that was analyzed, which is not the Reduced Main Street alternative, we identified 12 potentially significant unavoidable impacts related to transportation, two related to existing plus project conditions, and then several, five in the 2010 scenario and five in the 2030. Many of those significant unavoidable impacts related to that the city of Emeryville does not have jurisdiction over the intersections, and so we can't guarantee that that mitigation measure will be implemented. One of the intersections was in Berkeley, several of them were under Caltrans jurisdiction. So, in those instances, mitigation measures are recommended, but we just could not ensure that they would be implemented. And so, as a result, we, they are identified as potentially significant unavoidable. Okay, now we get to the alternatives. So, in the draft EIR, we considered a total of four alternatives. The no-project alternative, the reduced footprint alternative, a tower alternative, and the Main Street alternative. Both the tower alternative and the Main Street alternative were recognized as being alternatives that were more intense than the proposed project and that the city was considering those in the CIR based on a more project merit basis, and that those types, that type of project, there had been some interest on either the developer or the public side to propose something similar, more intense than the proposed project. So, that was explained in the alternative section as to why we were including those. Because typically, the perfect, purpose of the alternative section under SEQA is to look at alternatives that would lessen the impacts of the proposed project. But oftentimes now, particularly as you get into the mixed-use projects, the alternative section in SEQA documents is, the purpose of that is twofold. One, to look at what may be better referred to as variance of the proposed project, and then the second, to meet the objectives of SEQA, looking at alternatives that would lessen the impacts of the proposed project.
Now, would you say that's a function of the Planning Commission to take a look at an environmental document like that and then propose alternatives? Is that, is that?
I'm sorry, I didn't-
Is that a function of the Planning Commission to take a look at a project like that and then to suggest alternatives? Is that, is that appropriate for, in a planning process?
Yes. I mean, as far as the planning process goes, independent of the SEQA process, I mean, the alternatives that we considered in the draft EIR didn't so much come out of discussion with the Planning Commission. Now, the Reduced Main Street alternative did come out of some discussion and comments received at the Planning Commission hearing from both the public and the Planning Commission. And yes, that is, that's common. And I mean, again, the purpose of SEQA is to provide public input into the process and the project.
Okay.
Yeah. If you're asking specifically about the role of the Planning Commission here, as opposed to the City Council, I think-
Well, no, I'm just asking if it's appropriate for the Planning Commission to consider additional alternatives for a project that's being proposed based on input in the document and-
And the City Council also.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, technically, right now, the Planning Commission hasn't really, they've considered it for purposes of SEQA and this EIR, and they feel that the EIR provided an adequate analysis of that additional alternative.
Okay, okay.
So, that's as far as the Planning Commission has taken it.
Right.
So, this table, these tables go through the difference of each alternative. I'm not going to walk through these unless anybody wants me to specifically.
We did that at the earlier part of the meeting, so.
Yeah, I mean, this is each of the alternatives, the tower, the Main Street. But, and if anybody has specific comments on those questions, we can go back to that.
Can you just go back to the Reduced Main Street for a second?
Sure. So, here's the Reduced Main Street. It shows the difference between the, the last two columns on the right show the difference between the Reduced Main Street to the project, and then also shows the difference of the Reduced Main Street to the Main Street alternative. So, you can see the difference that compared to the Reduced Main Street alternative that was analyzed in the draft EIR, there is 336 additional units, but 11,000, approximately 11,000 less of retail, and then approximately 309,000 less of office. So, that provides you the comparison. And then, relative to the project, it's approximately 334 additional units, additional 170, 180,000 square feet of retail restaurant, and then on office, additional 105,000. And then, the removal- And then, the removal of the movie theater is the reduction of the 40,000 square feet there. And so, again, the Reduced, the Main Street Alternative was evaluated at a detailed level in the draft EIR. So, this shows you that it is less, overall less development than that alternative. Comments on the draft EIR, we received a number of comments, but not a significant amount relative to a lot of other projects. This lists the different commenters. We were able to go through and provide responses to each of the letters and did not feel that any of the responses necessar, necessitated any significant amendments to the draft EIR findings.
Can I ask a question here?
Sure.
I noticed in that document, a lot of the comments, the responses to the letters where this speaks to the merits of the project and is thus therefore beyond the scope of, an environmental impact response, and so no further comment is needed. And that was kind of the standard fallback to not addressing, quote, what they consider the merits of the project. So, when, for the people who wrote in concerned about merits of the project, they didn't get their questions responded to, and where would that happen?
I'll take a first stab at that, but my guess is Charlie will want to, I'll, I'll address the SEQA side of it, and then I'll let Charlie address the planning side of it. It's very typical, people, when you're looking at a project of this size, even a smaller project, people have a really hard time separating the project merit issues from the SEQA issues. So, we try to be as responsive as we can without blending the two together too much. And so, if there's something we can provide as a simple clarification, we do. But if it gets into more the subjective merits of the project, then that is considered during the time the staff report is written and staff presents on the project.
That's right. We'll, we'll consider those comments, and the Planning Commission and City Council will consider those comments when you consider the actual approval of the preliminary development plan.
Thank you.
So, that is an overview of the SEQA process and what has been done to date. The Planning Commission, as we mentioned, did recommend certification. We, your recommendation, or your certification means the final EIR has been completed in compliance with SEQA, was reviewed and considered, I'm sorry, I should say City Council, and found to provide an adequate analysis of the project and alternatives described in the final EIR, and finally, that it reflects the lead agency's independent judgment and analysis. That's what your decision is tonight, is, does that provide you adequate information to do that? To, to say that the document is adequate environmental analysis? Again, it's not to approve or disapprove any of the, the project or any of the alternatives that we've talked about.
Great.
So, with that, I'm available for any additional questions.
Charlie, do, any, any questions?
No.
Okay, Charlie?
Ask one.
All right. Anything else to say?
Nope.
Okay. Well, then, wrap this up to public comment.
Yes. I just want to clarify, this is not a public hearing, but the, it's an administrative item, but the council certainly can take public comment on it if you wish to.
Well, yeah, absolutely. Anybody here wishing to comment on this item? Now, we already heard most of what you wanted to say, but.
Eric Holman, Madison Marquette, Managing Director, developer of Bay Street. I won't reiterate what I said earlier, but again, I'm here about process, project seemed to have a number of merits, but there, there's a number of, of things, and I'm no SEQA expert, which is why I'm asking you for no time, that doesn't cost the developer, does not slow the developer's project down. There's some unusual things that happen here in this EIR. First of all, the alternatives were of larger scope than, than the, than the proposed project. Usually, the custom that I'm experienced with, the custom is that the alternatives are of lesser impact or at least equal impact as the proposed project. The second thing that was unusual is that through a public comment process, the project actually increased in size. And again, that's an unusual outcome of the public comment process as a project increases. This leads us interested third parties who are watching the process, again, not sitting here through your meetings on a, on a regular basis, but, but obviously interested observers, it's confusing to us and to see this happen. What we're described earlier as, the alternatives as being variants, really, were not variants. They were completely different projects with a completely different land, a mix of land use components. So, all I'm asking is for time to meet with the applicant, not only review the plans with Denise, but I want to review my plans with Denise, and I want her to understand what we're doing, and I want to know how my project impacts hers. So, I think this, this sort of synchronization of these major projects, you want to have occur, and it's not occurring right now, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Sears, Wermam Development. I have to echo many things that Eric has said. One of the beauties of this city is it's small, and so often, people are able to work together and have very open and constructive dialogues. For whatever reason, intentional or otherwise, we just don't feel quite that way about this project because for two years, we've talked about the big four, and this project being brought in is different than that. The EIR process is one that's very important, and it asked for public comment. But what's been said tonight is there were four alternatives. We asked for public comment. We got it. We shut public comment and came up with a fifth new one. Now, we, the consultant, without the public having any opportunity to opine, have decided it's not materially impactful. We're deciding that alone, without any input, and that's now the project that's being proposed. So, the one that's being proposed is not one that's had public comment. It's certainly not one we considered. We didn't know we should. It was presented as a done deal, and I just don't feel good about that. And we would like also to have a limited amount of time to understand that, if that's the proposed project, we'd like to understand it with Denise, with the consultant. Maybe we'll be convinced. If she believes there aren't impacts, maybe she can convince us. We'd be happy to be convinced, but we haven't had that dialogue that SEQA's supposed to allow. So, we're just asking for a small amount of time also. It does, we don't know if you'll grant this small amount of time, so we've actually had to create some additional comments to that, that Reduced Main Street Alternative because we haven't had the opportunity to comment before, and so we've got them here, the things we'd rather dialogue about in an open environment. Much has been said that there's no binding action here in terms of you're not approving a project. For that very reason, there should be no purpose in having to act on it now. As long as you act on it, parallel with the approval process, it doesn't slow the Martin Group, the TMG, down at all. So, maybe this could be resolved faster, but I don't see any, you know, important reason to act on it tonight, and we'd ask you to take more time, and I'm going to give some extra comments here.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other comments?
Yeah, Brian Donahue, again. So, it appears here tonight, I've been listening with interest, appears what we have going on here regarding the certifications, sort of a clash of the titans between Bay Street Two, of course, the Market Street, and then the Transit Center. The gentleman from the, I believe from the Transit Center sort of, I think, summed it up when he said that there's scarce infrastructure, and basically, in essence, he wants his project to be able to take the lion's share of the infrastructure. So, what it seems like we have here is developer greed, which is, I've seen a fair share of that in my life. So, there's a, my take on this is a finite amount of public goodwill regarding vis-à-vis traffic, and these other two developers are nervous that if you certify this project, they're not going to be able to get, they want the lion's share of the, be able to take the traffic before the people get fed up with it, and I think that's what's going on here. So, this, so if you certify this tonight, that sort of starts the clock ticking for this project, and these other developers are nervous about that because they want, they're greedy, they want to get their, their, their projects done, and they're nervous that this one might hinder theirs, and it's pretty obvious that's what's happening here. So, what's really going on here tonight is, I think you should just certify this project. To do otherwise is to be, engage in politics, and I, and I don't think that's appropriate here. And sort of, so it's sort of like, what we're looking at here is, of these three projects, who's got the moxie? Really, that's what, that's what we're really looking at here. I think these guys are disingenuous to claim that they don't, they didn't know that the alternatives could possibly be a final project is, I think is sort of ridiculous. I mean, they're professionals, I think they, they knew that, and I think they're not being entirely truthful. And so, this project, I think, is a rare example of a good quality development, the kind of development we want, and to not certify this, I think would be to be playing politics.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah. I'd like, I'd like to, I guess I'm going to jump into the disingenuous thing, and I guess, Brian, you can evaluate this, that the three developers that we're talking about all contributed to my campaign, and two wanted to delay, and so I guess it's twice as much money for me, so that's why I'm going to say what I'm going to say. You, you can carry out that. Look, all projects, all big projects do study environmental impacts, and specifically, traffic. We know that. And each of these four would individually have to do that and will have to do that. We did something unique here because of our concern of all the input that we've had about traffic relative to these projects. And we decided to join them together in a traffic study that we asked to have done. They're all still going to have to do their individual impacts, just as this one is done, but we asked to have it done jointly this time because we wanted to see how these four projects were going to impact the big thing. They're all happening at about the same time. So, it, it's a step in the direction of good planning. Let's look at the big picture instead of one at a time. So, now, we're looking at a situation where the project that they thought was coming forward is not the one that's coming forward. It's certainly going to have more impacts on traffic than the one that they thought was coming forward, and they're not here asking that this project or that this EIR be turned down. They're asking for a couple of weeks to meet with, with the folks from the Martin Group and to try to figure out if they in fact have concerns. And what I say to my colleagues, if this avoids, well, first of all, you can tell there's some bad feelings here because they feel like there's been a little bait and switch going on, and that's not how we want to do business. Second of all, why do we want to take a chance, and it may happen anyway, but why do we want to take a chance on a challenge to the EIR when they're saying, give us a couple of weeks to sit down and figure out if we really have a problem? Maybe we don't. We're going to meet again in a couple of weeks. This can be back on the agenda. The developer doesn't have any problem. We can try to, these are folks that we've worked with on lots of projects, we're going to be working on lots more, and besides these two projects, I think that the, that the gateway project people ought to be sitting at the table with this. And let's give them the chance to go do that and then come back in two weeks and see where we stand. Just, to me, it seems like a no-brainer. What, what is the reason for having drawn these folks together in one sense over a huge issue and then just kind of throwing it to the wind? I, I don't, I don't get it. So, I'm in favor of delaying until the next meeting, this item, so that they can have their chance to meet and see if they can figure out if in fact they have differences. Maybe they don't.
Okay. The only question that I ask here is that an environmental review is a statement of facts. I mean, it's, it's a statement of facts. It took a look at a project that's 1.2 million square feet, and it evaluates the impacts of that project. So, if we hold this over for three weeks or for a month, how is that going to change the statement of facts? All we're doing here is we're certifying a document that says we've looked at the analysis of this project, and we feel that the analysis is correct. This analysis could be the very basis upon which they could go to the Planning Commission and say, well, gee, this does take away our, our capacity, because this EIR shows, shows that it's going to take all traffic, all available traffic opportunities away, and so this document could be evidence that they would use to tell the Planning Commission, hey, you know, this project's too big and has to be scaled back. So, I mean, if I'm, if I understand what we're doing here, we're certifying a document of facts and, and research information, and are all those facts correct? So, that's what we're doing here. I don't see how that impacts their ability to do anything except use this information and say, well, hey, the project may be too big, we don't have enough capacity, so let's, let's see if we can change and scale the project to a different size.
Well, can that all make sense? But, but you haven't answered my basic question, is what is the harm in a two-week delay so that the concerns that are being raised can be addressed? Why do you want to just leave this angst sitting out there because technically, we can approve it tonight? Why, why do you want to do that? It just, it doesn't make sense to me. These are, these are folks we work with every day and that have got huge projects coming before us, and why don't we try to keep the team working together instead of being at odds with one another, if that's possible?
Okay. Well, I already answered that, but there may be some other comments.
Nora wants to, and I'll.
I find myself in a very peculiar position here. For the second time in an evening, I agree with Mr. Donahue, and I think we should move forward on certifying this EIR. This city, this staff, the Planning Commission has acted in good faith. We've been carrying on this process since 2005, and I believe Councilmember Cassis, you may indeed be a little disingenuous, because it is very difficult for me to believe that the two gentlemen who stood up here in a one-square-mile city could not get together with the representatives of TMG in this 45-day period. I'm of approval of the certification of this EIR.
I'll second that.
Don.
I have no comment.
Okay. Well, all right. Then, call them all.
Councilmember, yes, Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Fricki.
Aye.
Councilmember Cassis.
No.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
Mayor Bukowski.
It's already decided. Aye. Okay. All right.
Thank you, Brian.
All right. So, let's go back to the redevelopment agency agenda, and we have a status report on the South Bayfront Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge.
Damn right. It's a one-square-mile city. What the hell? You're fools.
Clash of the Titans.
Good evening, AGC members. I'm going to give a brief status report on the pedestrian bicycle, South Bayfront Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge project. In, on December 6, 2007, there was a public meeting on the project. It was, the project was announced by mail and email, and we had over 60 people attend, and we focused on several aspects, and those were included in the agenda and in your packet. And just to summarize the major, this, as, features of the project, which we asked the committee to provide comment on, is the west landing ramps, and that's the slide before you now. Essentially, before you now is a, a figure of where the pedestrian bridge crosses the tracks and how it connects to the Bay Street Garage, and where the stairs would go, go down connecting to a loneyway. So, the blue section is the ramp. The yellow line connecting to the ramp is the pedestrian route to the elevators at Bay Street. The red is the bridge crossing the tracks, and that yellow oval there is a potential, are the potential locations of the, of the stairs. There are two options. And we focused on several aspects, and those were included in the agenda and in your packet. And just to summarize the major features of the project, which we asked the committee to provide comment on, is the west landing ramps. And that's the slide before you now. Essentially, before you now is a figure of where the pedestrian bridge crosses the tracks and how it connects to the Bay Street Garage and where the stairs would go down, connecting to Oloney Way. So the blue section is the ramp. The yellow line connecting to the ramp is the pedestrian route to the elevators at Bay Street. The red is the bridge crossing the tracks. And that yellow oval there are the potential locations of the stairs. There are two options for the stairs to go down into Oloney. And one would be for the stairs to connect to the existing vehicular bridge, which you see before you, which connects both Bay Street garages. And the second option would be a stair behind that garage bridge. And this just illustrates, I will go into this further, but this shows you side by side what those options look like. The one on the left is option one, where the stairs connects to the current, to a replaced garage bridge. And the second option would be where the garage bridge is retained and the stairs are constructed behind it. This is more detail on the first option. Essentially, the yellow would be the stairs. That thick red line going vertically would be a new replaced garage bridge. And these are visuals of what this might look like. On the top of your screen, that's the pedestrian bridge crossing the tracks and stairs connecting to a replaced garage bridge and connecting to stairs going down, parallel to Oloney Way. Here's a view going down the pedestrian bridge, I mean, going down the stairs from the pedestrian bridge. And this is the view from Shell Mound, looking east toward the bridge. The second option would retain the garage bridge. And that yellow rectangle there is basically the stair, a stair tower with several switchbacks. And it would be located right just east of that garage bridge. Here's an illustration of what it might look like with the garage bridge and the pedestrian bridge coming from in front of the screen, connecting to the stairs. On the left, the ramps going down and connecting to the Bay Street Garage. Here's another view, looking from the southeast. And this is what it would look like, again, on Shell Mound, looking east. So we presented these schemes and several other design options before the community. And the bullets before you are sort of summarized, the comments you received from the community, and they are further elaborated in the meeting summary, which you have in your packet. The next steps would be to consider these comments, finalize the ramp and stair layouts, preliminary bridge concepts, which are being developed right now, and the next community meeting, which is now scheduled for March 8, which is a Saturday. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Were there any questions?
Yeah, Mayor Bukowski, I know it's early days here, but this is going to be a really unusual bridge, we would hope. And is there any possibility that we could get some input from the Public Art Committee early on in terms of public art within this structure?
Well, as a matter of fact, Ann Weber, who's on the project committee here, suggested that the Public Art Committee have significant input.
Some kind of a liaison or something, or at least be included so that we can be thinking of that element of the bridge along with the structural elements.
That has come up at the last project committee meeting. Remember?
So Ann offered to be that liaison, maybe informally, because she is a member of the Public Art Committee as well. The question I raised was, to what extent do you incorporate public art? Is it something that is a piece that is somehow associated with the bridge, but is a separate art piece? To the extent that it's integrated into the design of the bridge, then you start to tread, you start to tread upon the domain of the architect. So one of the things that I think is very true is the expression, "Too many cooks spoil the broth." So I think that it's good that Ann is on the committee, and she's provided valuable input. But I would be hesitant to bring in an artist to work with the architect because that's, I think, something that the architect.
Oh, no, no, no. If she is an informal liaison, that, you know, ideas will come up and they can be batted back and forth between Public Art and the Bridge Committee. It's just that we want a recognition that this is going to be a very special place, and we should think about art in terms of incorporation in there. That's all I want to say. No more.
Yeah. And following up on that, if you remember, when we did this building and the admin building next door, we had that same focus and two aspects, one of them ended up being problematical, unfortunately. But two aspects of that, apart from the public art, which is in the link and the labyrinth out in the back, were actually, through encouragement, were taken up by the architect. And one of those was the doors, the front doors over at the admin building. And the other was the signage, where an artist was actually commissioned on those two items. We ended up with some problems with the doors because they were so heavy and created openings that a child could get caught in when they were open. And so that had to be modified after it. But those are two projects in which the Public Art Committee didn't pick the artist. The developer, the architect, did and worked with them, and just towards our desire that as much art as possible be implemented into it. So I think that's all that we're really looking for here. And I think the Art Committee would have to, Nora, to publicly vote on making her a liaison.
We just want an awareness there.
So that's a good thing. Now, what I'd like to understand is, before we have this next community meeting, you know, we talked last time about getting some costing on these things. Is that going to be available to us by the time of that next meeting, or is that still going to be up in the air?
Yes, they're working on the costs right now. We hope to have those by the next project committee meeting, which will precede the community meeting. So they're developing a lot of material for that next March meeting.
Here's, and maybe the other council members don't feel this way. I want to have as many, as much community input as we can have on this. It's very valuable. But I'm a little concerned about things that are being presented to the community before we hear them. So if there's going to be information that's developed as to costing on these, I'd like to, instead of having it brought back as, "Here's what got discussed", I'd like a presentation here so that we know where things stand beforehand. Because, you know, we've got some intermingling problems here with this. We all want this to be a beautiful project, and I've been critical of the last bridge that we built. And it seems like we've got more constraints now than we had then in terms, and maybe not. Maybe we just didn't talk about it then, with, you know, the railroad in terms of how this bridge can get constructed and get put up in a very short period of time, kind of constructed offsite and then dropped into place. And that's certainly going to impact the aesthetics of the bridge, potentially. And so, you know, what I don't, I'm still in the place where I don't want to end up with, I love the stairway thing. I think it's great. But I don't want to end up with a beautiful stairway and an ugly bridge because we spent so much money on the stairway. But we have to look at the bridge part of it, not just in terms of the aesthetic of it, but what's practical, what can be done that fits the railroad's criteria so that, in fact, we could actually build that bridge. And are we going to have that piece as part of the analysis before the next community meeting?
Well, we are striving to get that data in time for the next project committee meeting, which will be before this community meeting and before the next council meeting. So at the next meeting, we hope to present as much as we can at the council meeting that we will present at.
Oh, okay.
At the first meeting in February.
Because, what I don't want to do is put out false expectations of people. Let's come in and have a meeting on what kind of bridge do you want to see here? When in fact, we've already found out that this is not one that the railroad's going to let us do because of their requirements. And second of all, it's one that's so far past budget that it's not even, you know, in the ballpark. And then also comparing the cost of the stairs versus the bridge. So that's all I want to do, is I want to make sure that that stuff gets run by here before we go to the community again, whenever that meeting's going to be. And I just want to comment, although I'm a.
You want me to comment on that, Dick?
Sure, thanks.
Part of what you talked about came up at our last committee meeting, and that is the idea of whether certain bridge types, the span, not anything ramp, stairs, the span, what the cost of the structure would be. And so I think that the engineer is very cognizant of the costs and is intending to produce some rough numbers. In fact, she said that she had, at our last meeting, already done some calculations of the cost but simply didn't present it because the calculations were too rough and didn't want to commit to those numbers. So I think that by the March 8 community meeting, there's going to be numbers associated with the cost to replace the existing vehicle bridge and numbers associated with the types of spans. The problem is that even choosing a span, there's a range of costs associated. So it's, and on the other side, the, I don't think the engineer would produce a possibility that is really not possible, given the railroad constraints. But the problem is that we don't know precisely what those constraints are right now. And the railroad is saying, this is not, this is not at our last community meeting, but the one before. The railroad is understandably saying, "Well, we would like to see a rough idea of what you're considering." And so, and I think that that's reasonable on the part of the railroad. They probably don't want to waste time providing parameters when they don't really know what is going to be constructed there. So we're all kind of moving towards narrowing the options. And I think that a good thing has been done in that we have narrowed, we have begun to narrow the options separate from the span, separate from the span. We have not really narrowed that many options on the Novartis side other than choosing the endpoint of the span, from point A to point B. Those seem to have been established. But, and on the Bay Street side, we seem to be moving towards detail on the ramps and that kind of thing. But on the Novartis side, with the park, that's not yet resolved.
And we have to remember that, in terms of the cost, we talk about the stairs and rebuilding the vehicle thing or not, and we talk about the span, but there's also these ramps on both sides that are going to obviously be very expensive. So all that has to be taken into consideration. Anyway, my main thing is just not to put out pie in the sky for people to choose and then find out that, "Sorry, folks, we can't produce any of that." So to the degree that we can get this refined, I mean, I would be in favor of delaying the community meeting if we don't have enough information to take real options to the public. You know, things that are really feasible, that, you know, and if we have to do some kind of a preliminary thing with the railroad and say, "We're considering five options, you know, are you guys okay with all this? Are only three of those acceptable?", I'd rather see us go that way and then get the public to weigh in after we've kind of done a lot of the groundwork, so.
As far as the railroad is concerned, we've had a meeting, and there's been very good coordination in that the railroad is not as concerned with the design of the span. They're concerned about how the construction will affect their operations. It's basically, we should minimize obstruction of operations so that the bridge that is being specified should be able to be constructed in the most minimally invasive process to the railroad. And so the engineers are doing that, designing this bridge in mind, with that in mind.
And then I only have one more comment. And my last one is just, and again, I'm, as I sit right now, if it's feasible, and the stair alternative just looks tremendous to me compared to, you know, the upfront. But in terms of fair presentation, if we look at the drawing for option one versus the drawing for option two, the drawing for option two has a car crossing the bridge, and the option one doesn't. We have this very esoteric, beautiful bridge with people walking and no cars. And that's kind of not a fair thing because there's going to, in fact, if we do that, there's going to be cars crossing there. So I would either get rid of the one in option two or stick one in option one so that when people get a look at these things, they can visualize how it's really going to be.
We'll park a car there.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, whatever.
Okay, great. Any other council input? Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. Any public input here?
I'd just like to thank the committee for their ongoing good work.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just say about this project, I'm on the committee, although I haven't been able to make very many meetings because they're putting them during the daytime, and I work for a living, so I haven't been able to make the meetings, at least very many. I just want to say, this is like a really good thing this city's doing. How the project has morphed from the first iterations of this thing to now is pretty dramatic. First, we had a, what I would call, recalcitrant staff. And we had the previous Public Works Director, who was pushing a design that would not allow for bicycles. And now we have, bicycles are going to be permitted on this bridge. And so I just think it's a really good thing. I'm really, and I'd like to thank Councilmember Fricki for all the hard work he's done on this. And basically, now it's a bicycle and pedestrian bridge. Whereas before, it was just a pedestrian bridge that the staff was pushing. So, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Councilmember Fricki. Appreciate that.
I don't remember a time when bicycles weren't going to be allowed, and the question is, could you ride them? And if you had it the way it was before, you'd get in the elevator with your bicycle, just like the current one we have. So bikes were always contemplated on, Brian. You just, you kind of always rewrite history to fit your own needs here, and I just need to.
All right, all right. Come on, come on, come on. Let's move along.
You'll hear from me next meeting.
I'm sure.
Oh, I'm sure.
We can't wait.
You just set it on truth.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you. That's all for this. Now we have, let's see, City Council Chamber upgrades in conjunction with item HC on the City Council agenda.
Yes, I'll try to make this as quick as I can. Essentially, what this item is doing is asking the council and the agency to approve resolutions that will allow staff to enter into agreements and provide funding to upgrade the City Council Chambers' broadcast and audiovisual capabilities. I'm sure most of the people at home, as well as the council, are aware that our equipment that we're using for broadcasts and for presentations to council is now obsolete technology. And in fact, there are going to be new mandates by the federal government this time next year that will require all broadcasts to be in digital format as opposed to analog. Currently, all of our equipment is analog, and we are going to be updating to digital equipment. This should improve our sound and picture quality quite a bit for the viewers at home and also for the council because it will also include new monitors and microphones for the council chambers, as well as a screen above the chambers. I knew that Mayor Bukowski would enjoy that particular part of it. It will also make it easier for people to make presentations. Some of the glitches that we've had in the past has been because people with newer computers and software trying to access our equipment, our equipment was old enough that that was a problem for any of you who've always, have ever had to use a computer software on a new, old software on a new computer, or vice versa. You know how that can be. So what we're asking is the council to approve a contract with Advanced Systems Group for $95,000, the design-build contract, to purchase equipment and to install it, and a companion resolution to amend the agreement with Second Sight Video to provide project oversight. This is a project that they've been very involved in to date since they are the operators of the equipment. And they, along with ASC, were actually the original designers of the equipment when we first put it in. Staff really doesn't have the expertise or the resources at this point to be able to manage this project. It's a fairly specialized project. At the same time, we are also asking the council to provide direction on another part of our continuing and, I would say, motivated steps to try to improve how we are able to provide information to the public through electronic means and just to be a little bit more user-friendly. And that we have received complaints from council and some others that the audio, that the garden-level acoustics are not the best for me. that the garden level acoustics are not the best for meetings, and that it's sometimes difficult to hear. So we have identified a console system that could operate downstairs, and it's a portable system that could be used in other meetings as well. However, it's a fairly expensive system. It is about four thousand, excuse me, it is about $4,000 just for, excuse me, it's about $4,000 for just the basic system, which isn't the individual consoles that you would need to be able to, to be part of the conversation. And each participant console is $700. So even if you only purchase six consoles, which would only be enough for six people to participate using the system, that's an $8,000 system. An possible alternative is that we have recently purchased a portable assisted listening system that could be used to compensate for the poor acoustics in that meeting room. It's also portable. We bought a system that have, that has 12 headphones that could be used, and it, it amplifies sound. That's what those devices do. And so even though it's not necessarily going to be used by people who are, would qualify as being, under American Disabilities Act, or are actually hard of hearing, it would amplify the sound for anybody that would like to be able to hear a little bit easier in the garden level meeting room. So in addition to approving the resolutions on the council and the agenda regarding the chamber upgrades, we're asking for a little bit more direction on the garden level. That concludes my report.
Go ahead, Jack.
We have to move ahead on this. We're in the dark ages with this equipment. I would like to move approval of the agency resolution and the three city resolutions. And I'd also like to make a comment on the, the Garden Court effort. Before we move ahead with an expensive system, can we take another look at that and see if there's any way to increase the ability to hear down there? Any kind of baffles we could use? You know, that was kind of a, it's a relatively unfinished room. There, there may be a way to improve the sound in that room that would service better than a, a system.
We could ask the facilities managers to look. I think one of the issues is, is if you've noticed that the ceiling is the finished ceiling, and so a lot of the sound disappears into kind of the, I don't know, kind of the-
Could we take a look at some baffles there, before we invest in an expensive system?
Yeah.
Do I have a second on my motion?
Yes.
I second that.
I had one comment, you know, while we're talking about broadcasting and whatever, I just want to raise this issue about ETV, because, you know, since I recently got cable, it disturbs me that most of the time, there's nothing on the channel. And I think that we should have something on the channel all of the time, whether it's just replaying the Planning Commission meetings, the General Plan meetings, anything. We should be putting out information constantly. If I go to the Okan Channel, there's always something on there, and we should be putting something on here. Maybe we could have Thursday, we replay the Planning Commission every Thursday, maybe the City Council meetings every Tuesday, but something that's always on the air so that we can keep people informed on what's going on. So I guess I'm asking for the council to maybe assist me and give some direction to the city clerk, that we should always have-
That is precisely the kind of improvement that the system will allow us to do.
Exactly.
Part of the problem we have now is that we have a manual, we don't have a video server that we can stack programming and have it replay. So everything has to be done manually. We also had a couple, we also have, our character generation has now completely failed. And so when you see the, the announcement of calendars now, it's not scrolling over things anymore. It's actually a DVD that we actually are installing with the calendar, which makes some of the things that I know, Mayor Bukowski, that you would like rather difficult. Once we have the video server and the rest of this equipment in place, we will able to not only replay council meetings and other public meetings, but we'll also be able to run many of the fine public service videos that other public agencies have.
I have a question.
Lot of different things that we cannot do now.
Mayor, I have two, two comments. One is, I'll, I'll second Nora's motion.
I already did.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I need some more amplification. Two points. One is, if we're going to look at downstairs, and let's get a sound expert in, because I don't think just finishing the ceiling's going to do it. The real problem down there is that when you have a lot of committee members around the table, all the way around the table, and you've got people sitting in the audience, a, a good part of the committee has their back to the audience. And, and so people sitting behind them on the south side, you know, essentially, as they're at the table, can't hear what they're saying, because they're speaking north. And, and I don't think we're going to be able to fix that without amplification. People sitting in the audience clearly have to be able to, to hear what the people around the table are saying, and it's been an ongoing problem. And we have a fair number of committee meetings there. I mean, we, we, we have the public art meetings there. A lot of times, they're not attended. Other times, there's a lot of folks. We had the Park Avenue Committee meetings down in there, and a lot of times, there were many people at those meetings. We've done some things to improve the noise. We got the Coke machine out of there, because the compressor was so loud. So that's a good step. So I'm willing to take a look at it, but I'd like to get an expert in to tell us that simply by putting sheet rock, you know, in the ceiling is going to amplify the sound enough so that people can hear.
Well, let me just say one thing in response. Your point's well taken, but there, the other thing you can do with these, these meetings is instead of having one long table, you have the table in a U facing the, the people who come. And then all that, the sound is directed out to those people that are sitting there. There's other solutions.
For most meetings, for most meetings that works, Nora, but when we have a lot of people down there, there's not enough space to really do it.
Well, if you have a lot of people down there, you should bring them all up here and have a meeting up here.
My other comment that I want to make, and it's just, I, I want to appreciate, and I talked to Dave a little bit before we got started, so I have an idea of where we're going. I want to appreciate the, the good work that's being done on this. At the end of the day, while we're doing, a lot of this is going to improve, improve our telecasting, I don't want to be in another public meeting like we were on the, on the General Plan Update Committee meeting, and, and have a room full of people that can't hear each other. And, and I, what I don't want to hear is the refrain that this system is designed to broadcast the sound out to television, and it's not designed for this room. We've got to have remote mics that people in any part of the room can use to speak, and that everybody on the other side of the room can hear. And if that's where we're going to get, then I support this 100%. But I don't want to end up back anywhere near where we are now.
And we actually, Second Sight has invited a sound expert in, because we are aware that there have been some problems with the microphones inside the chamber-
Right, okay.
Which is, we're not, we're trying to figure out why that is. And actually, I, I forgot, there's one more direction that staff has requested as part of this report. In the funding for this project, we are, staff is recommending that half of the money come from the redevelopment agency, which, of course, the agency's meetings are broadcast, and most, much of what is done at our public meetings is also for the agency's good. But in addition to that, that's, so that's about half of it, $52,500. But that the other half be taken from our education government called an EG Access Fund, which is something that's in our agreement with Comcast, our cable provider, that essentially, there is a, a charge that is provided as part of the cable franchise agreement that the city receives. We only have about $18,000 in that fund right now. It accumulates over time. At the end of the five years of the franchise agreement, we should have about $50,000. But right now, we only have $18,000. So staff is proposing that the balance of the fund, if we don't have enough by the end of the fiscal year, which quite frankly, I don't think is going to accumulate that fast, be drawn from the technology fund. And there are monies in the technology fund, in fact, to do that.
I would move that.
One altern, the other alternative is to-
No, 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 no.
Is to pay back the fund with the future monies that we're going to be receiving from the EG Access Fund. Alternatively, those funds could be used to support broadcasting at the Center of Community Life and slash Emory Unified School District, because we are also working with the school district to look at the possibility of being able to live broadcast the city's school meetings, as well as the school board meetings. But while Comcast has to provide the ability to broadcast, they don't have to provide the cameras and that kind of equipment to make that so. So those are the kind of two alternatives with that funding that we're asking.
Well, let's take one step at a time. Take the money out of the technology fund. We'll have an opportunity to discuss the, the second step, if we're so inclined.
And one more thing before the question. No, maybe we can get a round table downstairs instead of the, the rectangle tables that we have, and that maybe people would be better situated if they could look.
No, Dick's, Dick's problem is, people who sit over to the side, who attend those meetings, cannot hear when the people who have the back to the audience are speaking. If you have an open form of table, they're going to be able to hear.
So if you have a round table, though, there's less people with their backs towards it, and more people, you know. Anyway, let's call a question. Oh, did you have a question?
John? One of the things I was interested in is streaming the video on the internet.
Yeah, absolutely.
I didn't, you know, I didn't see that in the report, but I do see that we're going to have a video server. So I'm assuming that we're going in that direction. And let me be precise. What I've seen on other city websites is a past city council agenda, and the agenda item will be written out, and then there'll be a link to the written staff report, which is PDF, and it's not scanned. And then there'll be another link that if you click that, you can see the minutes, what happened on that particular agenda item. And then the third link, the third column, is you can watch that segment on demand. So I'm, I'm assuming that, that, I, I don't know whether we'll go in that direction in terms of the, the city website, but I just want the, the equipment to be able to do that.
Absolutely, yes. That, it will be compatible with streaming video.
Okay.
Call a question, please. Actually, without objection, is there any objection?
There's no exception, there's no exception.
Okay, great, okay. Let's move on to the next item.
Okay, whatever.
Consider Watergate Market Retail Condominium Feasibility Study.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, because I live within 500 feet of the project, I have to accuse myself.
Okay, I put this item on the agenda partly in response to the outcry that came out with the General Plan Committee. But actually, taking a look at this situation, if we were to establish retail condos, affordable retail condos, I think we would have a good project there, and we would be using the agency to, to really benefit the people in that community and in the Watergate area. So I'm just asking for a feasibility study to look into the possibility of creating retail condos at the Watergate Center, so.
Ken, I'm, I'm a little unclear on this. This is private property, and what are you suggesting here? Are you suggesting that the agency acquire this property?
I'm suggesting that the agency develop the idea of creating a project there, which would create retail condos at this center. If we create retail condos, and if the agency writes down the cost of those condos, then it's just like, it's almost like affordable housing. If you want to create affordable housing, then the, someone's going to buy a condominium, the agency writes down the cost of that condo, and then the person can afford to occupy it. Well, in this particular case, we would, we would be using agency money to write down the cost of retail condominiums, which encourages small business development. One of the most difficult things for a small business person to, to accomplish today is to have affordable circumstance where they can exist. The rates, the, the rents and, are so high-
Ken, I, I don't think anybody disagrees with you that, that the retail condo idea's good. But I would like Mr. Biddle to comment on how can, how, what is the legal procedure here? Are we in any way jeopardizing ourselves by, could we talk about a-
Sure.
A, pardon me, a, a feasibility study that is more generic, so that it doesn't target the owner of the Watergate property?
Um, you, you could do, you could do a more generic one, but I think if we did one on this, on this particular property, it would really show the benefit of this and how it would benefit the community. I mean, if you create a, a series of affordable condos here, and when I use the word affordable, it means that it's, it's such a desirable economic circumstance that it would attract the, perhaps the best retail options that, that could exist. In, in an environment where an individual could really sustain their continued operation without have to worry about the increase of a landlord, getting a percentage rent, paying triple net charges. So-
Well, we all agree with that basic. Mr. Biddle, could you comment on how we can proceed?
Well, we, certainly you can look at a more generic, you know, model of, of some sort of retail condominium. And likewise, you could look at a more specific one for, at that site. And if that's something that the, the agency wants to pursue, then you could move forward with a, you know, request for proposals through an owner participation process. I mean, that's not something that's all the realm of the agency's abilities to do.
Hang on a sec, though. I have a question for you, because the peninsula isn't in a project development area.
Well, the, that's what Councilmember Cassis was just asking me about. And looking at our maps, the Watergate office complex, and, and definitely, we would have to reconfirm this, but I think this parcel as well is in the 1976 project area. It is the Watergate condominiums, the residential piece, and then further, further west on the peninsula that is outside any of the project areas. But I'm, I'm fairly certain this parcel is in the 76 area.
So, so I guess I'm asking for a specific, I'd like to look at the feasibility of creating condos there, because if it's not feasible, then it wouldn't pay for us to consider a project there. But if it is feasible, then from that point, we could consider a project.
I don't think we want to move to acquire that property.
We're not doing, we're not moving to do anything. We're just moving to take a look at the feasibility of whether it makes sense. That's, that's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, but you, you look at it because you want to, you want to change the current use.
No, you don't, absolutely, you don't want to change the current use. You want to enhance the current use. You want to make sure that the Watergate Market has the ability to buy their space, that they can stay there in perpetuity. You take a look at this project, property, and you look at the Watergate Market, you could add an additional story on top of the Watergate Market and still be within the 30-foot height limit. And then as a redeveloped project, you could take a look at the tax increment that comes out of the project itself, and then you could invest it back in that project to make those condos affordable. Once you make those, those retail condos affordable, you can attract the best retail tenants there. You could turn that, you could turn that center around, you could upgrade it. And then what would happen to the quality of life at Watergate if you could get retail tenants there that had sustainability, that, that are locally serving, and that the community could choose to buy, choose who locates here? The, the beauty of this is, it's just like when you have a residential affordable unit, the agency gets to choose who can buy them. Well, in this situation, now the city gets to choose who can buy these condos. So now we have a situation where you don't have a landlord that's going to, that's going to rent to any particular user. Now you would have the community choosing who could locate there. And that's probably one of the most beneficial things out of this, because now the community deserves, decides who can buy those units. And once those units are bought, those people are in their own business, the city has nothing to do with it. And it's only if they fail, if they go out of business, then that same affordable opportunity is passed on to the next potential buyer. So once, once they're affordable, you would not have any problems selling them. I mean, that's the thing, that center could be turned around. The agency investment would be realized, because you'd be putting people in business, they'd be having increased sales tax, increased business license tax, because it's all based on grocery receipts, and it would be a win-win for everybody. The people at Watergate, their units would appreciate in value, because now they wouldn't have to travel very far. They could have the best bakery, the best shoe store, the best drugstore, and, and everything that everybody wants to see over there. So I'm just asking for a feasibility study on whether it makes economic sense to pursue a project there to have affordable retail condominiums. So it's, it's just information, information gathering to see if it's even feasible. So that's what I'm asking for.
Two years ago, we had a retreat, and one of the people that spoke at the retreat was a consultant, a woman who we hired to comment on retail condos. And I thought that she presented well, and she had cogent arguments. And her basic message was that retail condos are not necessarily the best for the city. So I was persuaded by that presentation.
Well, if you want to create locally-serving retail, the only way you're going to do it is to create a circumstance where a merchant has the ability to succeed. Otherwise, you're going to be looking at chain stores, you're going to be looking at, at, at the, the kind of stores that people don't want to see in their area. And that, I, I mean, I've been, I was in the retail business for 23 years. I know what it takes to make it successful. And this is no different than creating an affordable residential unit, except in this case, the agency investment allows everybody in the area to benefit from this investment, instead of only one individual where you have a residential unit. So this is just a feasibility study, and, and so-
My, my critique is- My critique is that there are two different things that are being discussed. The term "retail condo" is being used. And that term is a fairly precise thing. And what you're describing is very different from retail condo. And so, because what you're, what you're providing in the scheme is the ability of someone or some entity to dictate what the use is going to be there. Either it's the community that says, "Well, we don't want X, we want Y," or it's the redevelopment agency. And so, once you add that ability to dictate the use, then it's not really a retail condo. That's, that's a scheme that I have put forward for other locations. But it doesn't have to be retail condo. It can be, it can be regulated in a number of ways. It can be regulated through the zoning ordinance. It can be regulated by the redevelopment agency owning property and then, and then deciding, "Well, we're going to sell the property, but we're going to retain the right to approve the use." So that's, that's kind of, that's kind of the scheme that is happening at the Flatiron Building on San Pablo.
Well, that's, that's not a good idea, because there you're trying to, you're trying to restrict a private owner and his ability to lease, lease the center. This is a different circumstance. This is where the people would own their own unit, and the only uses that could certainly be provided are the ones that are allowed. And where the city gets to choose who can buy them, right then and there, the city is having the opportunity to control the use and only what the people want to see. You want, you want a circumstance where the people in the community are going to get the kind of stores that they wanted. I mean, you certainly came forward when we wanted to have the Promenade, and we wanted to have Azremendi Bakery. Now there, we made a very bad financial decision. I mean, I think the bakery is a wonderful asset. But the city has no business assuming a triple net lease and then turning around and subletting to a particular tenant. That is a bad financial idea.
Yeah, well, it was, it was a bad idea. And at the time, I was suggesting that the redevelopment agency should reacquire the property so that it could have that control as a property owner, not as a, a tenant and then subtenant, because that involved the triple nets, the CAM charges that, that are onerous for tenants.
See, I don't think we want to own the property. That's not what we want to do. We just want to create an affordable opportunity for a merchant to be successful by having these retail condos. That's what the feasibility study is all about. The feasibility study will determine the economics of it. It will determine whether the sale of those units is adequate to meet the sale price of the property. And I'm sure that by adding the increased density on top of the Watergate market, you would probably be adding at least another 20, 25% to the density of that project. And that's what's going to create the additional tax increment that can go right back into the project to make it affordable. I'm not suggesting that any agency money be taken away from anything else we're doing. Only the money that would be derived from the tax increment from that project, put back in it to make those units affordable and to make that center turn over and to give the people what they want, the best stores, and to increase, improve the quality of life. I mean, if we're serious about increasing small business opportunities, the only way you're going to do it is to create a circumstance where a small business person can make a living and can be sustainable. In this situation, if somebody buys one, they'll stay there forever as long as they're successful. And hopefully, if, if the agency gives somebody an opportunity to be successful in business, they're going to be more thankful to the community. They're going to be willing to give more, more back. And once you increase, improve the environment at Watergate, then all the value of all those units is appreciated because of the improved environment. So I'm just.
Mayor Bukowski, in the interest of time, is there any support for the mayor's proposal?
Well.
At this time?
I am intrigued by this idea. However, I feel that to move ahead with something at Watergate without the community knowing about it and without some consensus that in fact, there'd be a willingness to increase density there, I just feel like it's a cart before the horse.
Okay, so then when we go back to Nora's point, let's just do a generic feasibility study on, on retail condominiums and then, and then go from that route. Would you support that?
I mean, the other issue about that particular location is the potential market pool is very limited there. And so, I just, I mean, that market's been struggling for a long time there. And without a larger pool to draw from, I'm not sure any other kind of small business is going to have any better kind of results there.
Well, let me suggest here now, Dick, since, since we're going to change this item to a generic approval of a retail condo study, I mean, is that, is that within the purview of the Brown Act?
I guess, what I would agree to is looking at where in the city this idea actually could have some traction.
Well, I'm positive that at the, at the Watergate Center, it could work. But if you don't want to examine the possibility of doing that, then, then the generic approach is the only one I could say. I mean, at this point, if you want to start, if you want to look at retail condos, it's a really good thing to do, because we have so much retail that we're building all over the city that the idea of creating affordable spaces is what's going to get them leased, it's going to get better sales in the city, and it's going to create more opportunity. So I guess I'm going to change this item and ask if we can do a generic.
Well, Mayor Bukowski, could I suggest an alternative? I think, I remember that presentation, John, and that was a very savvy woman. She really knew retail. Before we embark on another analysis or another, you know, kind of feasibility study, let's see if we can find out who made that presentation. And I think it was a PowerPoint. Let's bring that back and see if we can recapture that information before we move ahead on the feasibility study. Would I have support for that suggestion?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's something.
All right, let's move along.
Okay, next item. Okay, department heads. Agency members.
I'll just comment on a very nice visit that was paid yesterday to the city of Emeryville by our Congresswoman, who used a zero emission hydrogen fuel cell bus to drive around her district, operated by AC Transit. I'll give.
Thank you, Dick.
I'll give Dick's employer some credit there. In which she highlighted projects that received federal funding that were brought home to her home district. And we were fortunate to be the recipient of $600,000 in this latest omnibus appropriations bill that was recently passed. And Mayor Bukowski introduced her. She had a very nice nod to Ken for his leadership over the years around bicycle issues. And I described the two projects that will be partially funded with the federal money. The seismic retrofit of the cultural arts center directly behind this building, and purchase of a pump that has the capacity to pump bay water in the event of firefighting needs, particularly on the peninsula in the event of a major disaster or other things. So it was a very fun day to celebrate the addition of additional resources into this community.
Thank you. Any other agency members? Okay, let's move right into the consent calendar for the.
Move approval.
Second.
I want to pull item L. Anybody pulling any other items?
Move approval of, consent calendar with the exception of L.
Okay, without objection, that's approved. The reason I pulled item L is because every year when this comes up, I always vote against this, specifically because I'm trying to get an annual study of traffic counts throughout the city that where a resident can get on the website and find out exactly what, what the traffic counts are at each year at select intersections. And I've never been able to get that satisfaction. We are charging traffic impact fees to different businesses. There's never any audit of those numbers to verify that those numbers are, are correct. And I think that the public deserves to know what the level of traffic is at key selected intersections. So I guess I would like to ask my colleagues here if this year it's possible to take a look at getting that analysis.
Mayor Bukowski, if I could suggest that you put that on the Transportation Committee, and we get a recommendation from the Transportation Committee for that kind of a, of a survey. I move approval of L.
Okay.
Second.
So you call a roll, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Fricki.
Aye.
Councilmember Cassis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
Mayor Bukowski.
No. Okay. You've done six to eight. We, let's see, we did seven to eight, we did eight to eight. Now we have the traffic committee report. Jeanie?
Before you, councilmembers, is, on number one is, basically in February, Councilmember Fricki had received a complaint in regards to.
Jeanie, I'm having a little trouble hearing you. Can you try to talk more directly into the?
Basically, at the Transportation Committee meeting, at the February meeting, Councilmember Fricki had.
February 2007.
February 2007.
Okay.
That Councilmember Fricki had received a complaint that the Bank of America driveway is a blind driveway. And that the vehicles coming through the driveway and exiting 43rd Street cannot see the pedestrians crossing the sidewalk. At that time, the committee had directed Public Works person Maurice Kaufman to get in contact with Bank of America manager as to possibly installing a gate. Throughout the months, contact was made with Bank of America manager. And bottom line is that they don't see the need to put in a gate. So at the November meeting, there was nothing to report as to changes, status of this. And Councilmember Bukowski had asked that, since there was no movement on this item, that it should be removed from the agenda. And Councilmember Fricki felt that since this was placed on the agenda because there was a complaint, that there needs to be a definitive answer from Bank of America. And therefore, the committee members agreed to seek the entire council's direction in pursuing this matter. So before you is to ask you to make a, provide direction to the committee and staff as to whether to continue to pursue the matter of the Bank of America driveway in 43rd Street or remove it from the agenda.
Mayor Bukowski, my understanding is that the Bank of America is going to be doing some extensive remodeling of the building and their site. So I would think that this would be moving into the arena of the Planning Commission. And I would, or Charlie, who knows the, the situation here, I would certainly suggest we may remove it from the transportation agenda and focus on what it's, what Bank of America is doing with their remodel.
I have a comment. I've been sort of following this, and so if I miss something along the way, let me know. But it seems like most of the focus has been on, you know, the idea of a gate or some kind of a warning when a car is going to come out. And I don't even know technically if this is possible. But could it go the other way around? Have we looked at that? In other words, if there's pedestrians coming towards it from either side on the, on the sidewalk, can there be like a sensor that gets that and then flashes a warning that's, that's inside, you know, for the people coming out in the car? You know, caution, wait for pedestrians. And that way, it's not on, it's not anything that's noisy. And it's only triggered if there's pedestrians there when a car is actually coming out.
I would say that is technically possible, if, if the property owner were able to do that. But that, right now, is a one-way driveway. And so, if we were to make it a two-way driveway, that would be something we could consider.
Oh, no.
Well, no, it doesn't have anything to do with one way. It's just, it's, it's the problem with, the cars aren't necessarily seeing the pedestrians and creating a safety concern. So if, if, when I say coming from either way, I'm talking about the pedestrians. So pedestrians are on the sidewalk, walking either east or west. If there was a plate in the ground that would then set off a sensor that would have a sign then right in the driveway facing the car saying, "Warning", you know, "Stop for pedestrian", something that would light up then. So instead of cars tripping a sensor, you'd have people tripping it.
I think it would, it would work similar to the in-rated, in-road pavement crosswalk that you see around town. The ones we have, you have to press a button, but they do have the capability of having those go off when a person walks by. So I think that's technically possible.
I mean, I.
Sounds like a condition of approval to me.
So anyway, I'd just like to look at that potential option, so.
Well, you know, I mean, I went and I met with that woman. John sent her an email, and I went and met with her. You know, the problem isn't that great. I mean, you know, that's a very active driveway. To begin with, Councilmember Fricki proposed putting a gate there. And that driveway is so active that that gate would be opening and closing so many times, it wouldn't even make any sense.
Then you'd have a complaint about the gate opening.
Probably. I mean, you know, that driveway is probably no different than hundreds of driveways throughout the city. Pedestrians are always in danger when they're walking down the.
Well, I'm moving that we remove it from the transportation agenda. Call them.
I agree.
And where's it going?
Call the question.
You had a place for it to go? You didn't?
Well, I've heard of no application with the city. Is there an application for?
I don't think they've got their act together. Davy, you got an application, Charlie?
Well, frankly, I'm not aware of any proposed improvements at the Bank of America. So it sounds like you know more than I do.
What can I say?
You know, I will say one thing. You know, the idea of going to the bank and complaining about regulating this driveway, you know, "We made 41st Street one-way, and we didn't contact them. We put in all the traffic coming, and we never contacted them." And the bank manager's first attitude to me, when I went and talked to him about the driveway, he says, "Well, I don't think the city really wants this bank here. How could you not even make me aware of all these changes that are being made?" And he was actually talking about, you know, "The city must not want the bank here. Maybe we ought to move this bank somewhere else, and you know, that would be a disaster." So, so, you know, I don't think, you know, I don't see, I mean, I know John feels threatened there when he walks by or whatever. But I just don't see the matter to be so significant that it needs any more attention. So, great.
Can we call the question?
Okay, so we call the question. Call a roll, please, to remove this from the Transportation Committee agenda.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Fricki.
No.
Councilmember Cassis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Yes.
Mayor Bukowski.
Yes.
Okay.
I move the rest of the recommendations of the.
Second.
All right, good.
Okay, is there any objection? Great. Okay, we did see, and now we're going to resolution, City Council.
I move approval of Walt Watman to the Marina Committee.
Second.
Okay, without objection. Now, consider changing the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Subcommittee to include advising the Planning Commission on development projects that impact pedestrian bicycle issues. I would like to hold this over until we consider the, have the joint City Council Planning Commission meeting, where we consider the role of.
I would support that.
Okay, is there any, is there another person that supports that?
Yeah, except I'm not sure when that's going to happen. And they weighed in at the last meeting, for example, on a, on a pending project to give input into the bike flow and whatever. So this could, could and should hap, their review of projects should be happening sooner rather than later.
Well, you know, there's nothing that should stop any other developer from going to the committee for a recommendation. I just think before we formalize it, we should, we should formalize the role of other committees too, because I think some of these projects should go before the Housing Committee, before the Transportation Committee. It just seems like we're selecting one committee as having a role to prove.
All right, all right.
Okay, so, all right, so you support the idea of waiting for the committee? Great, okay, so that's three. All right, consider establishing an alcohol impact area in the city of Emeryville.
How about we have an alcohol impact area in the entire city of Emeryville?
Well.
I'll drink to that.
Oh, God. Wait till I get my, okay. This is a program that's been tried in, as you can read on the, the report, in Tacoma and Seattle and Spokane. And the, the effects on problem areas have been quantified, and they're very significant and substantial. We have a problem area in this city at 40th and San Pablo. Actually, it's from 36th and San Pablo, probably up to 43rd, 45th. I think it is something that would benefit this city, and we can't do anything about it. The state has to do it. But I would like the support of the council to ask our representatives up in Sacramento to move forward in this. And also, Ken, if you would take it to the mayor's conference and acquaint them with the facts here, because every city, almost. and acquaint them with the facts here, because every city, almost every city, probably not Piedmont, but almost every city has particular areas that are just like open source, that you, you can, you keep sending police resources in there over and over and over again. And this may be a way to change that based on the experience of Spokane and Seattle and some of these other cities. So could I have the support?
If we put out a mayor's council meeting agenda, would you be there to, to, to present it? I mean, after all.
I suppose so, Ken, but I think you ably represent the city.
Okay, all right. And.
Well, we ought to decide if we all agree.
Yeah, do, do people agree with it?
Is there agreement of three members of the council to, to look at this?
I would.
I agree.
Okay, I would.
I, I support it. My, my only, my only concern is just, it isn't about this part of it, it's, it's that we don't have, and I'm aware of, as a city of Emeryville, any, any kind of a treatment alternative that we operate.
Yeah, well, no, but there is a program through the county, and Jeanie, can you just speak briefly about that?
Basically, there is a pilot program that is funded through the county that, right now, is being implemented in Berkeley, San Leandro, and Oakland. We are one of the cities that they will provide, next year, that they will provide us some help on in caring for those that are chronic people that we arrest.
Okay.
And, but that won't come until later this year.
There is an alternative.
Okay, next item, consider review of regularly scheduled public meetings and holidays in 2008.
I'd like to thank Karen for pulling this calendar together, and I just want to comment specifically about the October 21st issue that you raised. It's not a personal conflict for me. I, I don't think it would be a personal conflict for any of the staff members, so I'm okay with having a meeting that night.
Good.
Okay, great.
Do we need a motion on this?
I don't think so. Okay, do we have communication reports, department heads, city council members?
I have two quick items.
Okay.
First, Maurice, and I'm sorry to get a chance to talk to you about this. I had mentioned before about the need to get one of those upright pedestrian things in front of Pixar, the crosswalk in front of Pixar, and I didn't think, I don't think we had any of them left in stock at the time. And I realize it's a budget issue for us, but I think those things are very effective. And we used to have one down there, it just got run down and never got put up again, but there's a fair volume of traffic coming out of there, so let's try to get one up there. And, and second thing, it's funny how you sit here at the diocese and then you notice something different when you go sit out front. But is it possible, as we look at our screens, for us to get a map of Emeryville up that's not an advertisement for the Four Point Sheraton? I realize where this came from, but it seems like we ought to be able to afford a map that's neutral.
You know, that's, that's the same thing about our website, you know, you go on there and you look at the calendar and it's powered by People Express.
Yeah.
There we go, there we go.
All right.
Charlie, thank you. You're up and down.
Okay.
Good for you, Charlie.
Okay, Dick, is that it?
That's it.
Is that you?
That's it.
Anybody else? Okay, meeting adjourned.[1765.53]